It's seven oh two, I'd like to call the. Whoa. You who out there? Okay, thank you. Oh, it's seven oh three, I'd like to call the board. Uh, first point on the agenda is questions and comments from the floor.
Yes, um Heather Murphy. Heather Murphy.
Oh Heather Murphy.
Hello.
Step up please. Introduce yourself.
Hi, my name is Heather Murphy, I'm an alumni of Kanchan Harry School. Currently have two children that attend school here. My son's been attending for seven years, he's in sixth grade, started middle school, he loves it. My daughter's in second grade. Um, I came because I'm speaking for some parents that couldn't be here and for myself. We're questioning about the implementation of the tuition fee for out of district kids. I chose, I live online, literally, between Fort Plin and Kanchan Harry School and Nelson. I bus, I take my kids to school almost every day now. I used to, I used to meet the bus driver for off road and pick my kids up because technically we're out of district. But I made the choice, the conscious choice, to send my kids to Kanchan Harry School because this is where I run the school. And I wanted to see my kids graduate from here. I'm a single mom, I work, hopefully soon here, I'm starting my kid's job. I work very hard to have my kids enrolled in activities, for them to do their extracurriculars. And I'm not looking for any sympathy, it is a path that I chose based on decisions that I made. But I'm questioning why there wasn't some type of provision made. I understand if there's reasons beyond my knowledge and I'm ignorant too, about why you would implement that. If it does benefit the school district and the kids, I would understand. But why our provision wasn't made for kids that have been attending this school for seven years? It's going to negatively negatively impact my children, it already has. There are constant conversation with me, it's about, well, what about my friends? And what does this mean for my sports and this and that? I like my teachers and, you know, they're still able to see teachers that they've had. My daughter looks forward to meeting teachers that she hears my son talk about. And she's gonna miss out on that, she's gonna miss out on some really great teachers that I actually had that are sitting right here. And I, I greatly look forward to when I see teachers. My, my kid's coming in a couple of years and I can't wait for you to teach them. Mrs. Fata especially was one of them because she was one of my favorite, no offense, one of my favorite teachers. You know, growing up and when I attended here, she inspired me a lot, um, through everything that I learned from her. I really, really want that for my kids. And I'm disappointed that this wasn't a, I don't feel like it was a bigger conversation. Maybe I'm just too busy and I didn't pay enough attention. But I'm, I'm looking for, can you explain to me why? Why this, is this benefiting other kids? Is that's what's happening? Because when I run through it in my mind and I look at things, I don't see how it financially helps the school. Because I really don't believe in this area and how impoverished it is in the income in this area. The average income for the people in this area, they're not gonna be able to afford it if they've got three, four, or five kids going to school. In order for me to send my kids to Kanchan Harry School, my kids do no extracurriculars. My daughter's out of dance, my son's out of football, my daughter doesn't play soccer, my daughter won't be able to play football this upcoming season. I'm gonna take a lot away from them just to get them an education here. And I don't mean to be rude, but when I moved here twenty years ago, Kanchan Harry was very high in regard. The education level was here in the state. And I don't mean to be rude, but it's not here anymore. And I think it's a little odd to start charging when your education standard isn't what it used to be. Could I understood if it was where it was used to be, but in the state right now, it's not. I don't mean that in a, in a rude fashion. Because I'm still choosing to wanna send my kids here because it's a culture here and what I grew up with. So can, can somebody help me not be so ignorant as to why this is happening? And why we're just kinda not really thinking about the kids, how this is gonna emotionally impact them?
Well, there's two things that I would suggest. One is that, um, if you, we had a discussion about it when we, when we voted on it at the last meeting.
I'm sorry, that I missed.
No, no, but it's, that is available online. Um, you go to the Kanchan website, the Kanchan School website. And you can view that discussion, so you get more background about how the decision was, was made. Um, and the other thing that I would suggest to you is that if you want to discuss it, you can contact, um, the superintendent, the vice general. And you can have a discussion with him about it.
The parents that I spoke to, I'm sorry, Mr. Fitzgerald, I haven't had a chance to call you, Patty, nice to meet you. Um, I haven't had the chance to call you, but the parents that I spoke to that called you said that you had told them, if you'd like to discuss, come to the Board of Education meeting. And they're unable to make it, so aren't you. They have school, some of whom have work, which is not even here. Um, I would gladly go listen to that and then I'll educate myself and maybe pass it to come back and have another conversation.
And frankly, I would be glad to meet with you as well, along with, uh, Mr. Fitzgerald, talk to Fitzgerald. Um, and, and we can have a further conversation. I mean, you raised very, you know, issues of real concern that we would like to discuss.
Okay, my number's in my sign, my daughter's folder, feel free to call me if it's necessary.
Sounds good.
I'll let you guys get back to what you're doing.
Don't give me a call.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Thank you. Okay, so now, uh, before the session, we'll move on to presentations. Technology, take it away.
I just introduce, um, I have a great presentation. James is a, is a CTI student for us. Uh, Mr. Jones is doing just the CSI, doing an outstanding job with this program. Um, and I really wanna kinda give a big shout out to Mrs. Jones and the students, they helped us with the wonderful one. Uh, they helped put together the, the computers, make sure everything was set. If they didn't have those, the IT department said they would be really far behind, so I really appreciate that. And, uh, James is gonna speak on the student aspect. And then we're gonna have Phil Horner, who, uh, by the way, has accepted a wonderful award the other, the other day. We're waiting to see what happens, uh, in the future with national and state level as well, so congratulations to Mr. Horner.
What was the award?
It was VFW, uh, kind of Teacher of, of the Year Award. And Carol Ann, uh, she got there, nominated him. Did a phenomenal job in terms of explaining why he deserves the award. And presented that to the entire school the other day, uh, at the high school. And now we'll be waiting to see if he goes on to think to a national level award.
Yeah, it's regional and then it's statewide and then we'll see.
Well deserved.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Yes. Phil Shaw will also present as well, I guess, is this YouTube?
All four of us.
All four. Excellent. And, and then our, our technology specialist, Lauren, will be speaking too, in terms of what she can do with the teachers and the students as well. And then Chris is gonna follow up, uh, with where we currently, uh, with our rollout. And also some new exciting things with esports and everything else, so, take it away.
Let me, let me begin by thanking you guys for even allowing me to come here, it's, it's really, it's really an honor. So, good evening, everyone, my name is James Davio. This is my third year doing CSI and it's been, it's been quite a ride. It's been really incredible. So, begin, what even, what even is computer science internship? It's, it's a little program that allows students to express their creativity in technology. So in teacher terms, it's student-centered learning. Mrs. Jones provides us all the utilities we need, we need, and all the, all the magic to make something come, come true. Um, we're allowed to create programs in the library. Mrs. Jones has a little section in the back dedicated to testing out, working on projects. So, any like new shipment of technology that comes in, we get, we are the first to play around with it, look at it. See what we can do maybe to integrate it into, into the day-to-day classroom with students. How could we, how could we teach like a, like science or math? And it gives students a lot of independence or ownership in the school environment. It makes you, it makes you feel independent because you're, you're taking care of, you're taking care of a piece of technology. You're, you're the one responsible for it. You, you pick your own project and at the end of the year, you get to show it off to, to the community, which is, which is the Maker Fair. Um, so what kind of college and career opportunities does it offer?
Excuse me, but are you gonna talk more about the Maker Fair or could you just give us a brief description?
Um, yeah, I could, I could talk to you guys about the Maker Fair. So, at the end of the year, toward like the beginning of June, um, I think, I believe that's the concert, right?
Yeah.
So, so when they have the music concert, we, the, the CSI's, we have our own little presentation. So when you walk in, you'll see us and we'll have all of our creations we made throughout the year, any projects. So, so for me, for example, I, I've got, I've got a little arcade. It can, it can play thousands of video games and it's, it's just this tiny little microchip. Um, so what kind of college and.
Thank you.
Nothing.
Um, so what kind of college and career opportunities does this offer? Um, well, a lot of today's jobs require students to have a completely different set of skills that their parents needed after high school. The world is, the world has really changed since our parents were born. Um, so we promote this by using Tony Wagner's Seven Survival Skills and ISD standards. So I'll cover Tony Wagner's survival skills and Mrs. Goldman, he'll cover the ISD standards. So survival skill number one is critical thinking and problem solving. So whenever there's an issue presented to a member of CSI with, whether it be technology or, well, whether, where, whether it be like a Windows laptop or a Chromebook, because a lot of us are educating ourselves in the Chromebook departments because of the one-to-one rollout. And any issues presented to us, we, we work on them and we try to figure out how we can improve our knowledge. So number two is collaboration across networks and leading by influence. You wanna be able to collaborate with your peers. If, if you're interested with, or if you're interested in something that someone else is also interested in, then you, you both can work on that and create like a, like your own project with it, so you can show it off at the end of the year. And survival skill number three is agility and adaptability. The, the world of technology is always changing and it's really hard to keep up with it. But we always, we always try to keep up with it and, and just see, all right, what, what kind of technology is, is hot? What's, what's new? And what, what can we use to kind of integrate it into, into other students' lives? So how can we use that to teach electricity or something? Um, number four is initiative and entrepreneur worship. You want to be able to take something and make it your own. Maybe you can market it off to someone else, make it, make it interesting. And number five is effective oral and written communication. You need to be able to communicate with your peers, um, find something you can work on. And if, if someone's interested in the same topic you are, talk to them about it and. Right. And, and try to, and try to diffuse your ideas with one another. Um, and we also, we also log all of our information from our freshman to our senior year using the tech, technology assistance project system, which is, um, on a website called Gen Yes. And that helps us work toward a certification we can, we can get at the end of the year. Where we talk to someone in Seattle and basically they analyze all the work we've done throughout the year. Um, number six is accessing and analyzing information. Google is probably our best friend when it comes to knowledge, or when it comes to something that's beyond our knowledge. Um, number seven is curiosity and imagination, get creative. If, if, if something is sitting there, what can you do to, to integrate it into another student's life? Or, or the classroom, what can you do to improve upon it? If, is it just sitting there? Take it apart, maybe you can use its parts for, for something else. Take two, two of something broken and make some, and be one of something that works. And learning opportunities. So, in exchange for helping maintain school equipment, you have to give up one study hall and you have to, I mean, Mrs. Jones helps you choose a passion project that you get to work on at the end of the year. So, like as I said earlier, you get to choose a project that you wanna work on, what, what interests you. Um, and you work on it throughout the year and you market it to, not necessarily market it, but you show it off at the end of the year at the Maker Fair. Um, Mrs. Jones is human resources, uh, uh, human resources. She gives us all the, all the utilities, all the equipment, all the time, the space. And she's basically the magic that allows us to, to complete any projects that, that we wanna work on. Um, we can work on skills our school doesn't offer classes for. So like, like with the Raspberry Pis, I didn't know, with the arcade I think back there, I had no idea what I was doing when I first started here. I didn't even know how to turn the thing on. And now I can tell you pretty much anything about it, I can tell you which individual pin does what. It's, I've learned a lot in my years at CSI. Um, and as a volunteer, you have to complete at least two community service tasks. It, it really isn't that difficult to do. Um, at least once a month, you'll find two or three opportunities to, to complete a community service task. And whether it be teaching, um, people at Arkell, like, uh, like how to play video games, like we did, like we did in June of, of.
Of last year?
Yeah.
Of last year.
Um, and interns have to teach at least one lesson. So, for example, my freshman year, I taught everyone how to, how to remove an antivirus. And this really coincides with like the growing importance of cybersecurity and, and maintaining like a, like a healthy system. Protecting yourself from data breaches and that sort of thing.
And he doesn't have the clicker, so he would.
Top one first.
So, so this is a lesson from Jeremiah Durin, you don't have to play all of it. But basically Jeremiah just teaching chemistry with us.
Which element of an atomic mass of one hundred and six point forty-two, and this one's our yellow.
It's kind of like a, like a matching game, so he lists all the qualities of, of like a, like a metal or, or, or a chemical. And he has like a little periodic table of elements laid out, so.
I'm the one who gets it.
And you would take the robot and you would just drive, drive it over to which area that you think that, that, um, that chemical is or element. So, this is, um, Scott Snyder, an alumni. Um, he was teaching basic electronics or, yeah, yeah, the principles of electricity to students. And it's this little circuit board and you have to, you have to wire everything up to like, you, you could, you could pretty much take the floor and, and turn it into a controller. If you just give it a little bit of electric power and, and teaching like, for, he was teaching fourth grader, very basic properties of, of electricity. So students are working toward an IT certification that is the Gen Yes certification. So like I said with the, with those technology assisted projects earlier.
Sorry about that.
So like I was saying with the, with technology assist, assistance, um, projects. We use those and those are examined by someone in Seattle, you call them directly. And they grade you based upon how you, how you, the quality of your caps, the quality of your work. And just how, how well you did overall. And they wanna see, they wanna see how you grew from your freshman year to your senior year. And just see how well you've, you've done overall. So, what are my accomplishments? What have I done throughout my three years of CSI? I built a pie top for Mrs. Goldman last year. It's basically a little laptop with, with a Raspberry Pi in it, just tiny little circuit board. And it's, it's all, it's, it's like an on-rail system. So everything slides into one another. You can, you can buy additions, so if you wanna have multiple speakers in it, you can just, you put it on the rail system and you, and you put them all inside of each other. It's really neat. Um, I built an NES system, which is back there, I'll bring it up for you guys. It's a little gaming system and if you take it apart, you can see it has, it has a little circuit board. And this thing can play thousands of games, literally thousands of games. It is really neat and with the Raspberry Pi, the, the only thing, or you're not just limited to, to gaming. You can make robots out of this, you could, you can make like your own artificial intelligence. And it's not gonna become sentient or anything attached to it, but.
So how, how did you figure out how to put that together?
Um, well, the, the internet pretty much taught me everything I need to know. Mrs. Jones gave me the fundamentals and, and I learned from experience.
Has it wasn't Mrs. Jones?
Reading books.
What is, I feel dumb, but what is a Raspberry Pi?
Um.
I'm, I keep hearing you say this, I have no idea.
It's, it's.
I don't see that.
That's what I said.
It's a circuit board.
One of them could volunteer.
So it's what's, is basically.
That's a hardware specifically.
You can make the robot or anything else.
It's like, it's like a primary game of physics.
It's a little.
Electricity.
Yes.
It's a close.
It's not a, it's not like a license.
I am also on the district tech committee, so I helped Mrs. Jones and originally Mrs. Grimshaw with the, with the rollout of the, the one-to-one Chromebooks for the freshmen and sophomores. Um, that was quite, that was quite an experience. It gave me a very, very nice taste of, of what it's like. Um, I've done a lot of troubleshooting for Mrs. Jones with the computers in the back. I've, I fixed last year this little laptop right here, can't really see it that well. But I made, I made that using just old broken laptop parts and sure enough, it works beautifully. Um, I also maintain the Raspberry Pi part, which, which is this, this little guy. So it's a part of like the ten of them, I think. And it's, it's a really difficult job because there are so many tiny parts. And you have to keep everything organized, you have to take inventory like once a month. It is not a very easy task. And I am helping Mrs. Jones organize an esports team. Hopefully that will be all ready by, I, I would imagine, spring, hopefully next spring.
February.
February, you think?
Next season.
I'm, I've started work on.
Computers.
I've started work on the code of conduct, everything is slowly pulling together. And that's it, does anybody have any questions?
How many hours a week do you spend doing CSIs?
Um, probably about ten hours if I were to average it out. No, not ten hours, that's, that's unrealistic, probably five.
Do you do that every block down?
Yeah, every block down.
And.
And then every other day blocking.
And I really did block for ten.
And upon your graduation, how many different certifications will you have?
Um, so hopefully I will have just, just a Gen Yes, it's the only certification we have right now. Um, yeah, it's the only certification.
Do you guys used to do Cisco, something with Cisco?
That was not me, that was a math.
Oh, okay. Yeah.
We're working on it, we tried to get Google certification last year and our, whatever portal ninety-five was at the school failed us on the day of the exam. So we weren't able to do it, but they're gonna be working on that in this Evans class actually. Hopefully they'll, they'll find a way to get the Google certifications reversed.
Um, I'm interested, of you and other members of your, uh, team, um, how many started off really being interested in maybe tech careers? And how many people are now thinking in terms of technology careers at this point?
Um, I really couldn't give you an exact number of this, but I mean, from my experience anyway, like I started just interested in technology and now this has pretty much become what I wanna do as, or for my, for my living. I've, I go to, I go to BOCES now for, for cybersecurity. So I'm, I've been learning a ton about the intern, the inside of a computer, how everything works, um, how processors are made and how they function. Um, I know a couple of other people who are insanely interested in, in CSI and, and how it's really shaped their, their career path and what they wanna do.
How many people are actively involved in CSIs?
There's twenty-six.
Okay, yeah. So, so we have twenty-six members now. Um, it's grown significantly from last year. Last year, what was the number?
Uh, there were twenty-four last year.
Oh.
Interesting.
Well, it hasn't, it hasn't grown significantly.
We're just making this up. Although our freshmen have increased incredibly. We usually only had one or two freshmen, but with the advent of the computer science pathway, we have eleven freshmen. Uh, which is a whole different experience for Mrs. Jones.
Mrs. Jones is doing an incredible job with integrating CSI with the computer science pathway. It's, it's really an awesome program.
Another question, how do you think the existence of a one-to-one program in our school district will affect what CSI group is doing? How many thoughts about that?
Well, I, I can't say that, or I can say that the, um, the rollout of the Chromebooks has definitely changed things around for us. Like, I've been taking a ton of notes on, on like Chromebook repairs and I, I've done a couple myself actually and it's. We, we have, we have our own team of people who are working on the Chromebooks, learning, learning how to troubleshoot them if there's a problem with it. How do you, how do you get inside of it, how do you take it apart?
Mrs. Moon has trained them, um, on your person, has taught them how to change out the keyboards, how the keyboards get broken. Um, I think next week she'll be showing them how to switch out a screen. They've gotten very good, there's a common problem with the battery when, and they know how to take the battery out and put it back in, so the computer will restart. So you know some basic skills.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Jones.
Hi, um, so I'm Lauren Goldman, sorry for the sound of my voice coming through my nose, but, uh, it'll be okay. So, uh, the student seminars relating to the rollout in ninth and tenth grades, we tried to, uh, bring them in as soon as possible so that we would start introducing some things or in some cases, just reviewing and enhancing the knowledge of the students with the applications that we use every day. Or maybe some of you, uh, if you weren't Google fans before, maybe you are now. Um, with Gmail and all the many things that Gmail can do, uh, including organizing their inboxes and putting labels on things with the calendar and actually, um, putting their, um, home and out-of-school activities in line with the already inputted things for their class assignments, so that they know exactly when everything is due. And not to say there's no excuses, but there's no excuses. Um, and Keep, which is their kind of a nice quick way to use their notes. Um, if they wanna just take a quick note and even collaborate, um, possibly use it as a checklist. Um, Tasks, which is really great for a lot of our students, not just in, and also teachers use it too, for to-do lists and even subtasks, so they can really get into the ditty gritty and break something down that would otherwise maybe be overwhelming and check it off as they go. And then, um, School Tool, which we've been using for a little while, but now has, they have the capability as students to go into their school tool profile, so to speak, and they can see all of their grades and all the other pertinent information that they need, just to keep it simple.
Um, before you go back to the, um.
Sure.
Are students getting keyboarding skills training? Because, you know, to do like notes and all that, you need to be able to type.
Um, yes, well. To some extent. Um, last year, when, um, when Miss Evans was doing both sixth and eighth grades, the middle school, they were getting it in two places. Uh, this year, she's only, because of the way they moved her schedule around, she's only able to do it with the sixth. We'd like to, nevermind, um, have more of that. And, uh, she was using typing, which one was it before?
Uh, typing dot com.
Typing dot com.
Different one this year.
Now they're doing a different one. Um, and I'm gonna be introducing a little bit of time for them to use Typing Club. But as far as touch typing, we're gonna, it's, have to integrate some of that into, into a little bit of class time unless we get that back. So we're trying, but we would like some more time somehow in the schedule, maybe try to make that happen, but that's another conversation. Yeah. Um, also, they're getting a lot of practice, which is helping at least find the keys, they might not be, but we gotta get them in the pipeline. So with the faculty, uh, just to, I just put a few up here for the faculty and these are just the starting points. There's many, many, many more. But, um, and not all of them are even necessarily Google, some of them are third-party things that work with Google. But, um, almost, I think when we had a show of hands at the last, uh, K-12 faculty meeting and you were asking how many people use Classroom in, with their classroom, um, not to sound redundant, that's what it's called. And I think it was like about, I wanna estimate around eighty, eighty-five percent, that's not about right. Um, and it's only gonna get more so as we get computers to all the kids. Um, because we have still partial grades with charts and things like that. But as that continues and they have the ability to use it in their classrooms. in their classrooms, it's it's only gonna get better, and Classroom helps with a lot of, oh, sorry, no question.
No, that's what I was gonna ask, but who's that?
What is, so Google Classroom is basically the one-stop shop classroom management tool that generally also works with pretty much all of those other things. So let's say that um at a typical day, a teacher would have to get papers, make copies, hand them out to everybody, everybody has to fill the bell, give them back to the teacher or not. Maybe it gets lost in a locker or folder, et cetera, then the teacher has to get feedback and then took it back after grading it, and maybe it wasn't, you know, the whole process of doing all of that, you could do with Classroom. So they can put the assignment out, they can, everybody can be enrolled electronically in a group, and then they can put the assignment out, students can do the assignment without really even going anywhere. They can get comments from it, get instant feedback if the teacher wants to get it as they're doing it without even the teacher necessarily walking around the room, 'cause sometimes you wanna quietly just give a little nudge. And then it can get graded and come back, and it's all in the same portal, and because we can do that, we can take care of everything, well, maybe not everything, but a lot of things digitally. Save a lot of paper and ink, which by the way saves its money, and then export the grades out to School Tool, so it's all one and the same. Um, it also has uh a function that they call the stream, which functions a little bit like your Facebook newsfeed, so that if you wanna remind somebody or post an announcement about something happening in class, you can do that and it will instantly send an email to all the students. You could also um make sure, just to cut across paths between these two sides, you could also use Classroom to get the word out to uh their parents and guardians. So if any of you, how many of you have kids in the district? So if you have kids in the district, you should be able to get notifications about the stuff from Classroom, I've already got it going for a long time. But the other things, Docs for your word processing, like Microsoft Word, Slides, which is basically Google's version of uh PowerPoint, and Forms, which allows us to do all of the things that you would normally have to send a form out for and analyze the data from it, like that.
Does Classroom allow us to put texts, um uh like textbooks and things like that inside of it?
Sometimes, sometimes you could put, you could, sometimes you can integrate an electronic textbook into Classroom if they've created that capability. That depends on the textbook companies and their rights and publishers' rights, sometimes, but most of the time, the most that they'll be able to do is they still have to go to that e-textbook site, maybe they do the assignment and then whatever the grade is might export to Classroom. I think that's probably the most you can do right now. So. Um, so the seminars, just recap, the freshmen and sophomores learn how to use Gmail to improve communication and use Calendar to increase their time management, use Tasks to promote their productivity, which hopefully they use, 'cause it will help them a lot. And they can use Keep to organize their notes, and then they can use School Tool to look at their grades and assignments.
How would Tasks promote their productivity?
Because they can subdivide what they have to do, so it makes you a little bit more productive if you could see what you're getting done and feel accomplishment. Some students, especially as they get started with some of the bigger civics in high school, of the upper grade levels, an essay or a project can seem like an insurmountable thing in a week or whatever it might be, but with Tasks, they can create the main task and then have sub-level tasks within that for each step along the way and check them off.
Does Tasks integrate with Calendar and Task簿 as well, so it's like.
Yes. It does, and I wanted to mention just as a quick aside that Calendar, Tasks and Keep all live, say live, 'cause they float on the menu to the right in Gmail. So if you open up Gmail, not that I'm saying, suggesting you do right now, but you could, and you would see on the right-hand side, you'd see your Calendar, Tasks and Keep, maybe not in that order, I think I may have put those up. Okay. And then just uh last, lastly, and I chose to tell this with pictures because there's a lot of text in slides sometimes, that I really wanna show a lot of the kids, uh which you do in the videos. So this is actually last year, so these kids, some of these eighth graders of are now in the CS, maybe not in this picture, but in this class, went on to the CSI program in part because of some of the things that we did with virtual reality and Makey Makey and Edison robots and so on and so forth. Um, I think we use, yeah, we use the Spiros too, so everything that we use with robotics and so forth, um they got to experience at least once, and I I think, I mean, I believe, especially with Nick Kwiatkowski, um that definitely cursed him, he went into CSI. Uh, Breakout E D U.
Uh, just a question, do all the eighth graders get to experience that?
Oh. Uh, will they or did they? Yeah, yes and both, yes to both, yes to both, sorry, yes to both, um my ears are a little foggy, sorry.
Will they, did they or will they?
Uh, Breakout E D U and collaboration to, kind of goes with the Makey Makey as well, that they're all working together, this is pulling them in with the engagement in a way, not that other things have it, but it's it's a world that they're that they see a lot around them and now we're doing more of it in school. Uh, Breakout E D U is like an escape room, just to put that in small, uh not small term, but a not real term. Then, um, this here is actually a club, it's not really for the design thinking, but this is actually a club and you can use the uh technology integration with one-to-one and how that is allowing them to work together even when they're not together. So when they don't see each other and they still need to be able to share important information or work on documents, they can do that. And design thinking, some of our students here. And some of our other future CSI's coding, I'm telling you right now, these two kids in this picture are gonna be in that program in two years. If you're, if if everything stays the same, they will, because this is Sawyer, um he's in seventh grade and he's using CodeHS and doing really well. So just as a, to put it into perspective, like it's gonna keep filtering down board work until even the youngest, I don't know how young, but really young kids are gonna work, and then imagine what they can do when they get to work. So. Any, oh, questions? Any other questions? Just.
Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, I'm sorry. Feeling well, apologize. Yeah, I'm sorry.
Oh, that's true.
Uh, yeah, so, um, the I C standards have kind of started to live, eat and breathe these for a couple of years. Um, I C standards for students, the website is in this link of the slide, so if you have the slides for your records, you can visit that for all the, you know, midigritty of the standards, but basically.
What 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 is what is this term?
Oh, sorry, yeah, that's part of the, so it's the International Society for Technology in Education, sounds really important, right? Um, and it is, but I don't know like how many countries are involved or anything, but it's kind of become the prevailing set of standards for technology and education. So any conference you go to, like Dice Gate, which I was thankful for, if you had some heart and helping send me to that, um that all students will become empowered learners with the foundations, as you were mentioning and James was mentioning.
Yeah, James, his mom was out there.
Okay. Um, that they become empowered learners with the foundations of things and having a strategy to um set goals and achieve them, that they also will become digital citizens, which in a nutshell is being able to be safe and also respect the rights of intellectual property online, so ideas and software and everything else, but also privacy, security, all the things that we know our kids really, really need, especially if they're getting an iPad in kindergarten. Um, knowledge constructor is kind of like the fancier term for all the research skills that we've been teaching in library for many years, except now they're putting it in terms of technology. Um, so curating good resources, evaluating things, um those, all those steps that go into that, they kind of shoved that in here just to acknowledge the fact that you need to follow a process. Innovative designer, without really explaining a definition for it, is everything that the CSI's do, I think. Um, having a process, like engineering a design process, having a goal of what you're gonna make, troubleshooting it, doing the prototype, you know, putting it out there, getting feedback and then fixing it again, that whole thing is innovative designer. Um, computational thinker is describes everybody in CSI, so knowing how the computer works, um what an algorithm is as far as computers are concerned, not just math. Um, and then creative communicator is basically something that we've also been doing for many years, but now they're putting it into technology terms, so every presentation that somebody does in Phil or Phil's class or Voss's class is probably they're using creative communicator standards, I know that the one that they're about to talk about in a little bit, definitely did it. And then a global collaborator, also something we've we've been doing for a long time, but now in technology terms, because we can now go global with our collaboration using these tools. And even as early, however, early, probably starting at seventh grade, 'cause you have to be thirteen to use certain things, we could Skype, well, maybe not Skype, um we could Skype, but maybe one of the other tools, like maybe that Google offers. We could web conference with somebody across the world and they could talk about something that they're learning, technology or otherwise. So that gives you just an idea of that, and by doing so, learn about other cultures and how that can shape them. Now we're done.
Can I ask a question on the international piece of that?
Sure.
Um, I know at collegiate level, there's a um thing called COIL, which is about international learning, where you have um classes in different countries and they collaborate. Um, I I wonder if that exists in the high school environment? That might be something really interesting to look at.
Maybe we can take. We'll take a look.
Coil is the abbreviation.
C O I L, like international learning at the end of it?
Yeah. Yeah, yeah, exactly, it's collaborative.
We'll take a, we'll take a look at that.
Online international learning or something like that.
Don't need to help.
Well, actually, what Lauren and James talked about, um is is a really nice segue into what we're gonna be.
Yeah, go back to slide.
This is great, um before we get started, I think we'd be remiss if we didn't start off our part portion of the presentation by saying thank you to all of you guys, because without your approval, without your support, um us literally going to the conference next week, uh we never come to fruition. So thank you for seeing the value in in that, the exciting thing for us, um includes the fact that, you know, a lesson plan is is just that, simply put, it's a plan. And what our kids did with our plan and what they created is what the committee found so special, so when we go to Austin next week, the kids are coming with us and their work is coming with us, and that's gonna be on the display for some pretty uh important people on a national level, so that's great, we're taking the district and the kids with us, so thank you again. Just to give you some ideas, we're we're headed out next week, um we're gonna be presenting on Saturday, the twenty-third, we're gonna be doing Facebook Live, if you guys uh uh would like to watch us present, um it's eight-thirty Austin time, nine-thirty Canjo time.
Could you said, could you give us a link that we could.
Absolutely, yeah, be happy to, yeah.
On Classroom. Can I back up one thing to us?
Yeah.
We've we've gone to um four conferences now, so as a group, we've gone to, we went to um Chicago, we went to Washington D C, we went to Boston, we went to Denver.
Yep.
And so we would go to these things and we just, we loved it, it was a great opportunity, we loved the whole time and the experience and got all sorts of information and we thought, you know, maybe we could do this. And so Phil and Phil had basically said, all right, let's try it, and so that's kind of how we got here, so we've been, we've been going to these conferences for a long time, we'd like, we could probably do that, and so now we're gonna do that.
And and the beauty of the lesson that we have, um not only does it center almost entirely around technology, but it's it's vertical alignment of its best, and it really is the culmination of what we've been working on as a department over the last couple of years, whether it's essay writing, um collaboration. Uh Terry Schwab and and Joe DiUscani aren't here, but they certainly were a very, very important integral part of that, so I wanna make sure that they they get credit. Um, but it's it's stuff that that we under Blake have been working on for a long time now, now it's kind of all coming together. Our lesson, yes, it's being taught in global, but it really represents standards that apply to Blake's American history and Voss's civics class, and and that's the beauty of this. Um, the idea centers around technology, the availability that our district has, it certainly enabled this uh as a project to to advance over the years, it's something that the committee specifically pointed out in their acceptance letter that they loved. You know, there are over thirteen hundred people put in to 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 present, and and we were one of the chosen ones, our children, so thank you again, um I'm gonna hand things over to Phil, so he can talk a little bit more specifically.
Uh, one more?
Yep.
Next one.
Oh, wait, sorry, and and the the title of this is activism, that that's the title of the whole conference, um so a lot of what we're doing, you know, trying to to make people educated consumers is our take on this.
So just to piggyback off of what Blake and Phil both said, was one of our goals is when we would go to these workshops, we would say, man, we can do this, like it's a national level, it seems kind of a, you almost wanna progress from the state level through the national level, let's just go for it. So it's one of those things where if we're gonna tell the kids to just go for it, like if you got a dream, you got a goal, go for it, well, we're actually doing it, we 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 told the kids, like seeing some of the scenes, we've been saying, oh, I mean, we really wanna get to a national conference, now here we are, and it's it's a little surreal for us. Someone on the outside might say, that's a social studies conference, that's a big deal, for us, it's a big deal, so we uh we really appreciate just to piggyback off of what what Phil said, and one of the things we really wanted to do, uh when we applied for this, is uh we reached out the last conference, we spoke to a couple of people that were um, you know, in the background of, uh, you know, acting actively searching for people to present, and we said, what do we have to do, we've we've pursued this for a couple of years now, we really wanna uh present in Austin, Texas, what what are some recommendations you can give us? And they said, look up what the twenty nineteen uh standards are and uh see what the theme is gonna be and center your lesson on the theme, so instantly, we walked away, we looked it up, and we're like, wait a second, we have a lesson on the bill, this is what we already do, this is great. So one of the things we we do, um through using Google Sites, uh is we create an online portfolio for the kids, so instead of having a lot of us being unorganized, myself included, if we hand out all these papers, what do the kids do with them? Fold it up, stuff it in a backpack and then you never see it again, with an online portfolio, now every single topic we do from topic one to topic ten is digitally safe, so all their vocab, all their docs, all their slides, their presentations, for each topic is now organized. So they really, as long as they have no excuse, come test time, come quiz time, and they say, oh, I forgot it at home, no, you never forget it at home, when it's on your phone, when it's on your, now we have laptops to work with, so uh it's always there. So we're using that Google Site now, um to to create some sort of active participation, so what this what this does, um is it teaches them some background information from the twentieth and twenty-first century, so one of the things we wanna teach them is uh looking at some of the businesses throughout the scope of the world, um what are some background uh things that they do to operate um productively? So they, we give them uh the good or the business and we say, run with it, look up everything you can about about this uh this business and try to figure out, uh are they acting morally, are they, what are the ins and outs of the business, uh what are the profit margins, all sorts of things to create some sort of idea of how they're produced and if they're produced legally, 'cause we go through a lot of human rights, we go through a lot of labor practices, um and civic duties, that kind of thing, so they take that and run with it. So what we do with them is take their Google Site that they've already created, and then we want them to mimic the business that they've chosen, so we we provided a couple of examples, um moving on, I think it's the next slide, maybe? Might be the one after, that's fine, you can stay right here, so like Nike, Nike and Disney, Coca-Cola, those are some examples, the next slide, you don't have to go to, the next slide, we provided you guys, if you ever wanted to look at, a uh the model that we use, uh which is Nike, we recreated the, we looked at a Nike website and we created our own personal Google Site and wanted to show the truth behind Nike, so even though the sneaker might cost a hundred and fifty dollars, we all know it doesn't, so the kids do some research, they find out that it doesn't cost a hundred and fifty dollars, it costs fifteen or twelve, so on our actual site, on our site that we create, we would, instead of putting the hundred and fifty dollar sneaker, we would put the price of twelve. We would rename the sneaker to, here's, yep, so this is the site that we created, it looks like Nike, but it's not, it's, so right here, fourteen ninety-nine, that's what the actual price of that sneaker costs, so by them researching all this, they would research Under Armour, some kids are like, I can't find any dirt on them, well, that's not the, that's not the task, you wanna find dirt, you wanna find the truth. Are they actively um participating in in uh certain rights, if they are, then we're good, but teach us and uh show us what they're what they're learning as far as the business goes, and here's, uh, is this one? Michael Mann, if we chose. Michael Mann. If we chose, yeah, one at random. So this is the website he chose. I think it's for Gucci.
Yeah.
And then he finds out if the business practices are, are working properly or not. Boy's jacket's seven hundred and twenty, only manufactured for sixty. So then we take this, we go to a next level, which, uh, would be in Blake's class, which they could really actively, um, you know, provide some sort of integration with outside sources. So if you see that there's a business that's really not acting, um, morally, we can reach out to some local officials and bring them in and say, what can we do to be active participants and make sure this doesn't happen again?
And then each, each student who does one now becomes an expert in that particular area of the study. So one of the ones I saw was a kid did it on Starbucks. And so he went in, he was studying where, the origin of coffee, where it came from, the workers and so forth. And I'm just wandering on the hall, and there's this kid standing there with a laptop, and there's three kids standing around, and he goes, now let me tell you something. The kid tells him, and he does, it's really fast. It's about a five-minute thing, and the kid's sitting in this, and he goes, thank you. And it's like speed dating. Boom, and then it comes to the next one, the kid. And you go into the next one, and the kid teaches, and they freak three minutes and three minutes, three minutes. And the one kid says it over and over again and becomes an expert in these topics and knows it forever.
So one of the things we do when we do presentations is, we know, especially this generation, when they get up in front of a group of people, they get really nervous, um, and they either cower or just try to avoid it altogether, and then we see, we don't see them. They're absent. So one of the things we figured out is if we take the laptops and instead of having one person in front of thirty people, now you have ten groups and have the audience move. So instead of me presenting to the whole group, I'm just presenting to maybe two or three, and then after a couple of minutes, they rotate. And after the fourth or fifth time, instead of the kid reading right off the slide, now they're like, I don't even need this. Let me tell you about Starbucks. Okay, so it creates a, a much more, um, feasible working environment, and it, it creates an active learning environment, so you're not just waiting there for forty minutes while each people, each person is talking.
And, and what's nice too is the kids are allowed to pick whatever product, whatever business. So there's some ownership there. You have the kids who might do anything from Remington guns to the Nikes. But it's, um, it's something that, that's important to them, something they're probably buying. You know, how does it get on that shelf in Crossgate? Well, I mean, who's putting in the labor? Where are the resources coming from? So I, I think there's some, it makes them think. And, and what we're learning is that Generation Z is the second largest consumer group in the United States. They're just behind, you know, forty-five year olds. And, uh, and marketers know that. I mean, they're the target audience now. I mean, it's all the time they spend on their iPhones and their computers, that's where they're getting hit with all the advertising. So they're the targets. We need to educate them so they're making better decisions.
When they do all this research, if they find practices that are unethical, immoral, or they're, uh, oppressing, you know, their workers are poorly paid and, and, you know, treated poorly, what, what, what next? What, what are they doing with that?
And that's the beauty of it. You know, we go back to, how do you write a good, uh, a good essay where you support a thesis? You know, we can take that and apply it and, and write to local officials and all of you and say, listen, this is what we've unearthed. Um, are you aware of that? Maybe they aren't. You know, I mean, but almost all these businesses in New York State are operating in some way, shape, or form. And it's always good to say to the kids, well, go and voice that, that concern you have. Maybe offer up a solution too. Don't just offer up, this is the problem I'm finding out. Um, but be part of the solution. And that's where a big portion of this activism comes in. Be wise in how you spend your money, but also tell people what you, what you found. And the kids like doing that. You know, like I said, the, the kids have, have loved this. Um, and really look forward to it every year.
And what's been their experience when they do each other in that way?
It's hit or miss. It depends, I think, on whose officer you're contacting. But, um, you usually get some nice correspondence. And again, oh, sorry. I mean, the availability, I mean, we're working with freshmen and sophomores. They have the Chromebooks. Um, so it, logistically, doing this is, is so much easier.
And it's also nice too, because our kids, we always talk about, they need a why. Well, why are we learning this? Well, now it's, it's really creating, some of the things we've learned from nineteenth, twentieth, and another 21st century are now really applying into real life, so they, they find value in it also.
And one, uh, benefit for their class too is they have tenth and, and ninth graders together, together. So the 10th graders are kinda like experts in all this. So when they're doing it, it's kinda like the, the, the ninth graders can't screw around because they, the 10th graders make them prepare properly. Whereas this is how it's done, and they lead them. So they kind of, you know, they lead by example, and they, and they, they're forced to kinda grow up quickly. Whereas I think sometimes ninth graders by themselves don't do that. And the kids are kind of like, it takes a little while to buy in, but they've already got the 10th graders bought in, so the ninth graders have to buy in, or they're just kind of left behind.
And then we also have another expert of, you know, the European economy. So we need a, a little bit of influence, like, hey, how do we, how do we take this and?
That's how it started with the old country.
That's it. So now we have, we have a nice.
What are you complaining about?
Yeah, that's right.
You know what's nice too is, is going back to what you said, Dr. Brody's, kids are almost shocked when they come across, like, decent business practices. It's like, hey, do I include this? Yeah, you include it. It's good that they're coming. Nike's actually been one of the biggest really offenders of all of this, but because they've gotten such negative publicity, they're starting to improve. So kids are shocked when they come across, like, good evidence. Yeah, you include it. Include both, and that's what we want you to do.
Another question, so, um, this sounds very exciting. How is this affecting how students approach other areas of social studies that you normally teach?
Well.
Or F and L?
A, a lot of global history, and when we look at the standards for American and civics, it's, um, it's economic. Um, the relationship between global north countries, global south. And when you get into the 20th century, it's, it's really, what are our relationships with people below the, the equator? Um, and it, it really, we constantly refer to this and say, well, remember where all of your clothing is? You know, politically, who are we supporting in Guatemala? Because that's where we have these factories that are providing cheap labor and, you know, why are we involved in certain areas of the world? And, and kids are making connections I don't think they did prior to this assignment.
And the new tests aren't asking for rote fact recall. A lot of it's data interpretation, letter reading, um, you know, chart interpretation, maths, cartoons, all that. So they really want that more. So the kids are forced to kind of like, it's not just, do you know a date or something like that? It's all kind of interpretation. Now, they have to understand the facts to figure out the data, but, you know, it's more and more kind of interpretive.
I just wanna, can I just add to this? Only because I, I'm doing the, uh, I have my business law and government class this year, um, and we just finishing up a chapter on advocacy, and their names get brought up. So I have the juniors and seniors, um, and so this gets brought up. So FYI.
Well, and it's also something to, to piggyback off of what Blake said, is that we are inundated now. We're, we're in the information age, so we are inundated with data, with information. But then it's like, well, what do you do with that information? So we have all this knowledge that we're showing them, and one of the big pieces we want out of this is character development at the same time. So when they realize, wait a second, I, I paid that much money and there's a, a child somewhere in a third world country that can do that? That, that doesn't feel right in here. Good, we excited your conscience. That's what we wanna do. Um, so by doing that, uh, we're taking that information and giving them an active feeling that they're active participants and making an impact in the world.
And global independence, you know, and, and mapping and geography and climate, and all that comes into play.
Yeah. Assessing the data that is out there, because in today's age, I mean, you, again, you're inundated with all this information. What's reliable, what's not? What's just someone's opinion on a company because they had a bad experience versus the data actually is out there to prove it? So I mean, really being able to assess fact versus fiction online, it's things that we never really planned. It's all like coming in and, and we're building off, on this, on this one project. So we're hoping to do more of it, so.
How long does this project go on?
Give or take. It usually is, um, about five days or five class days. Typically, um, we give them, you know, a full few days to, to get as much information as they can. And then the last two days, I think last year may have gone a little bit longer, six or seven days, but that was because that they were finding so much, and like, listen, we need a couple more days to. So instead of like, you know, hammering them with homework and bringing it all back home, we said, let's give you a couple more days and really finalize this stuff. That way they can create some really, really astounding Google Sites.
And they're presenting to the students in their classroom or?
Yes. Yep, so we, we have the room set up, so there's like four or five desks in the hallway and four or five desks in, in our room. So as they're presenting, you know, that, that first couple, you can see the kid kinda reading off their slide and kinda hesitant, and then second round comes, and they realize it's not so bad, that they're gonna survive. And then the fourth or fifth round comes, they, you can see that the comfortability really comes. And then the beauty of this is they really know their stuff by the last, last couple.
And I'm hoping that this will get better, because in eighth grade, I make them read out, uh, speak publicly about current events. So hopefully they'll get a little less timid when they, when they come to you guys and do this, this presentation.
I think we're already seeing that.
Yeah.
James Davio, are you kidding me?
Yeah, James Davio.
That's a quality.
James Davio?
Say, by the way, how many times I made a lie on him? I hope it's too boring for my.
You know what James Davio did for me when I first come? I, I, I had an old computer that died, and I took the, the hard drive out and I put it in the freezer. Somebody told me to do that. I left it there for ten years. It was all frosted, and I brought it, and I asked Tammy, I said, Tammy, I, I think I got pictures of my children on this hard drive. You think I can get? She goes, give it to James Davio. He's this little ninth grade kid, and I, and like, two weeks later, he comes up to me with a flash drive. I'm like?
Okay, also, uh, in September, I had about as much hair as Mr. DePaul over here. And I lost it all, because, uh, I am going to be in charge of putting all this, this presentation in, uh, in Austin on the screen. Uh, they informed us that just about everything that we want to use at the conference will cost us dearly. So in my infinite wisdom, three years ago, I ordered a very tiny projector, which I have in my room, and it's available to any of you to use if you want to travel. It's very small, so I'm gonna take it with me. We're gonna take several computers, and we're going to pray that, uh, the wifi works. I spoke to, I spoke to a few presenters at the conference that I went to last week in Rochester, and they told me, okay, bring extension cords, because, uh, the outlets are never where you want them. And then put everything on, uh, the jump drives or on your computer, because at the most important moment, the wifi will go down. Okay? So, uh, so, uh, hopefully I'll recover. No, I'm not going to recover from that. Uh, but, uh, uh, but I, uh, uh, we are ready to go, and we're going to show them, uh, this presentation, and I think we're going to run away with it. So, uh, so we will have our own stuff. Uh, so, yeah, we were dumbfounded. We were dumbfounded by the organizers, organizers of the conference, uh, at, at, at the cost that we would have to pay for this stuff. So anyway, we say.
And me, Adam Skiboid, thank you for listening.
Yeah, me too.
I have another question, so, I mean, this sounds wonderful for students. How has it changed your approach to teaching?
I, I just think the whole movement towards Google, um, and, and the online portfolios that Phil was talking about, the, the man's a, a, a great person to have in the classroom, because he's like a brother, but he's also so up to date with all this technology. It's fantastic. And so are the kids. So I mean, they, they have embraced this technology. So I think, looking at like the duration of my career, the, the online, the Google, the Chromebooks have, have really revolutionized everything that we're doing at Canto. And I mean, on a scale, especially this year, it seems like.
It's definitely a spin-off.
But it's in a really good way, in a really good way.
Because you have, we, we actually went Google, almost completely Google a couple of years ago. I think actually it was, believe it or not, we actually had a notification that we were almost like four or five years into this Google transformation, but we could never reach the full capabilities of it because we just didn't have the technology. So we were, I mean, Tammy, we were relying on you and Tracy's room, and because we had these huge classes and trying to find carts, it was, it was crazy. And then you had computers that would take twenty minutes to turn on by the time you got there, the kids. So having a one-to-one, it's, it is huge. I can't tell you how it's, it's revolutionized our class.
And it levels the playing field. Every kid in the classroom has a problem. You know, and kids are proud of that. Not to mention, uh, we rarely run anything off that way. We rarely run anything off. I mean, it's.
Like the copyright I was talking about.
The, the activism part you, you talked to, this, that's, that's not the presentation. This is your presentation review. It's not what we're presenting. But there's this whole part on activism. And in fact, Samantha is a, is a, too, because Samantha marched. And so we talk about activism and we talk about, um, Amy Bowden, who represented the Rohingya in Myanmar. And, and I would talk about local people that made, you know, taken causes and pushed it. We talk about, um, um, Amisha Stead, Heritage Foundation. And then we talk about different people from Canto. Well, one of the things we talked about too with, with James is, um, come on, Smith. Goes to SUNY and does the esports.
Emily Oger.
Emily Oger. Emily Oger was at one of our schools, was not, you know, she didn't fit in that well, you know? She kinda was on the, on the fringe, and she's a star. She's a star. She's on national television stuff. She started esports.
She's on Frontline.
A big deal. Like, she keeps coming back and keeps saying, here she comes again. So we're kinda using her to kind of say, you know, here's Canto people, and look at them being active. So that's part of her.
Well, I, we actually, last March fourteenth, when students walked out, when fifty students walked out, I was shocked. I just was overwhelmed by that activism. And now I, we get to get a sense of where some of that might come from, so, thank you.
There's multiple ways of doing that too. Not just, you know, there's, there's things you can do online now that you may not feel comfortable doing that in front of a lot of people. Well, now you have the ability to do that, you know, right on your laptop.
Good luck. Have fun.
Appreciate it.
I was just gonna ask, you know, having been a, a student here and, and, you know, being a sub teaching multiple districts, I think this is really valuable. Um, you know, when I was in the fifth grade, Joan Koloje, now a retired teacher, uh, while the foreign English was available, used to have this right to businesses, um, like, to learn about what they were about or, you know, ask about their products and things like that. Um, so that was always very popular. So I'm not really surprised that that is a successful program. But, um, outside the school, I work for the village of Elliston. Uh, one of the issues we've been having now is a crumbling infrastructure. Um, the village doesn't have the money to pay for a whole new, you know, water sewer system. Uh, so we've been working with, uh, organizations that contract with the state to do all kinds of, uh, you know, poverty inquests, um, all kinds of different surveys that you just have to get grant funding to even afford to do. Um, and people don't come out to the meetings a lot of the time. And I think that having this sort of thing, uh, I've talked to Blake's students before about this. They always get really interested in it. Um, a lot of kids in Fort Plaine do as well. Uh, so I think it's important, gets them to really understand those things, because it impacts them. Because the two places where people really get a chance to, um, influence something is where they spend their dollars and where they vote.
Alright, thank you, thank you.
Bye.
So just a real quick update on the, uh, the progress of the one-to-one implementation. As they, as they trickle out, I'll, I'll pay them a compliment. Uh, two groups in here could not have helped us more with the rollout of one-to-one. Um, Phil and Phil, we approached them about rolling devices out in their classroom and being kind of the hub of, can we take a class day and, you know, inventory devices? Give them, allocate them to students? And I don't even think the sentence was out of my mouth, and they were like, yes, 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 whatever you need, we'll do it. They have been a, a, a huge help, um, in letting Ms. Goldman in and Ms. Jones in and assisting with that. And Ms. Jones, CSI students, we would not have had Chromebooks in the hands of ninth and tenth graders or, or the fifth graders in the timeline we did if Tammy CSI students weren't inventorying devices, asset tagging devices, now creating a student help desk where they're literally learning how to repair, you know, the devices that we have in-house, because there, there is breakage, accidental on purpose, it does happen. So, uh, those two groups, we wouldn't be where we are if it wasn't for those two groups, and I can't thank them enough. Um, real quick update. So the, uh, the initial wave of SSIP money, that, that first wave rollout, um, is, is in the hands of students. And the carts are being signed out. The one-to-one devices in high school are being used daily. The fourth and fifth grade classroom carts are being used, uh, on a daily basis. Uh, there was a, there's a, there's some small changes to the SSIP that have to occur. Essentially, I gave you one example, um, when we wrote the SSIP to what it was actually approved. Um, technology changes quite quickly and it becomes antiquated. So the device we spec was the Dell thirty-one eighty. When the SSIP was approved and we go to purchase, well, they don't make that anymore. So those are changes that New York State expects, because technology does change so fast. So little things like that, we have to go back and amend the SSIP. And some of the projected costs that we had, when these devices changed, we actually saved a little bit of money. So, um, we have, we're gonna have, we're gonna be able to buy some extra cases, um, and a couple of extra devices that I'll tie in at the very end as it relates to esports. Um, what we're waiting for now essentially is the reimbursement from New York State from phase one. So we, we rolled out the, the first rollout. Uh, Leah submitted the paperwork to New York State for, with that initial expenditure. When we get that reimbursement, we make the next purchase. So what does the next purchase look like? Um, second, third grade will go, uh, one-to-one classroom carts, and those are Chromebook carts. Um, the middle school, sixth, seventh, and eighth grade go to one-to-one take-home devices. So currently in the middle school, there is, um, third, there's a, a lab of thirty, um, for each grade level. So currently in the middle school, there is a lab of 30 for each grade level. We sign them out across grades. So there's three carts. Those three carts will become one-to-one devices. And then kindergarten and first, we will start with iPad labs for each classroom. Kindergarten is going to be iPads only in the long run. First grade is going to be the transition year. They will have a combination of an iPad and Chromebook lab in the classroom. And that was something that the technology committee, we talked about starting with tablets and then transitioning them. So, you know, taking Mrs. Leverett, a lot of input from Mrs. Leverett and the sevens and Miss Jones and Miss Goldman, we decided on first grade being that transition year. So we'll still be exposed to the tablets, we'll still transition into the Chromebook devices.
One question, is Chromebook is a laptop?
A Chromebook is a laptop. It's essentially, there's no storage in the unit. It's a web-based laptop. So nothing saves to a Chromebook, it saves to your account in the cloud. As you sign into your email at the school, it's a Google-based email. So on any Chromebook, you could open it up, put in, you know, mark.brody@canijon.org, put in your password, and you are now in the Google Cloud, so to speak. So you can access your Chromebook that way. The beauty of it is, I save something to this device and I forget this at my house, my work is at my house. I save something to the Google Cloud or on my Chromebook and that day I forget it or in a pinch I need it, I can sign into my Schwab house device and access my things right there because it's all cloud-based. And that ultimately is where the future is. The future isn't in, you know, storage that's located somewhere. You know, we have a server here, we always have a server here. But the H drive, you know, for 20 years, I don't know, we stored things on. People store less and less on it because it's not convenient. It's not convenient at 10:30 at night if I need to change something in a presentation and that presentation's at school. It's really convenient when I can log into my device and that presentation's there. And that's what storing to the cloud is for everybody.
Yes, ma'am. How much would you put it in?
When it is a Google education-based cloud, no. We can store whatever we want in there. You know, Mark Brody's private account, they do, I think they cap it at 50 gigabytes for free, which is still, unless you're trying to store a lot of hi-def video or something like that, you can store infinite documents and a lot, a lot, a lot of pictures in 50 gigabytes. Then the second wave here, or phase two, we'll also see the first devices come in and will start to impact teacher classrooms. Throughout the course of the SSIP investment, we have 20 new smart, it's called IFPs, interactive flat panels. Think 70-inch television as opposed to board with projector. The cool thing about the televisions also is they are web-enabled, so you can actually sign into the Chrome browser on the television, you can cast with it. If I'm, you know, if I'm a math teacher, I can walk up to, I can scan the QR code and now every student in my classroom could have a mobile whiteboard on their smartphone. So as someone's delivering a lesson, you now have 30 whiteboards at students' desks that can answer questions or still go up to the board. One of the big cells of the new IFPs, the traditional old smart board, it was one device, one person working. The new devices actually recognize 20 touchpoints at once. So you can actually have four students at a board working on four separate problems or working on one problem together and those touchpoints are all recognized individually. So there's a lot of cool, unique features and we'll be getting 20 of them throughout the investment. The biggest purchase is in phase four because we wanted to get student devices in first and then the big device purchase for classrooms will come at the end.
So where are those first IFPs going to be?
So we have a list essentially to be approved for the 20 IFPs. We sent out an email last year and there was essentially a requisition form where teachers had to fill it out, they had to tie it to the board goals, and they also had to write a justification of why they needed it and how it would impact the structure in their classroom. So we actually received exactly 20 of those. The first ones are probably going to go to the, is it third grade? I don't know. I think it's third grade at East Hill. They were some of the first ones to get out in front of it, so those were spec'd to be the first ones we got in. And then with most of them coming in the fourth phase. The high school unfortunately probably ends up being towards the end because structurally it's the hardest because of the construction of the building. These boards weigh about 170 pounds. You can't just hang them off of the metal studs. They actually, we have to go to a portable mount or they actually have to reinforce the wall to hang the panels. So the labor takes more time, so it's more of a breaker summer project to where the construction on a concrete wall, like a wall like this, they literally create a plywood template, they put a traditional VESA mount, which is something you can go to Walmart and buy for any flat-screen television, and they hang it off of that, it's done in an hour. So it's labor, labor time cost is kind of the big thing that will push that in this building probably more toward the summer. Any other questions about SSIP stats?
Probably all going to be mounted.
Right now, we talked about actually the super classroom or mega room or whatever it's called, they have one. We're ordering a mobile mount for their IFP to make it more of a portable unit. And all three of the library media centers, they are going to be one of the areas to get it early and we talked about making them mobile mounts just for the simple fact of if the library media center has it and is using it, they also can be a conduit for bringing that to classrooms, showing teachers or helping teachers use that and explaining to students too. So the mobile mounts are actually quite cost-effective. They're only, with a tablet holder meaning something you can put an iPad or a computer device or anything on a podium, they're in the neighborhood of $500 to $550. And it's a quite sturdy amount of effort to, you know, to manage. The second part of, and probably the more exciting part of the presentation is we, as in Mrs. Jones and the 16, I think, students she had sign up in combination with myself, NAREC, and our CTS people, we're pretty excited that Kenji Harry is going to move towards an esports program, assuming we have the support of the Board of Education with that. So esports, one of the big things that.
That's on which team?
Which title? So esports really wants you to get away from thinking it just as playing a video game. I had a hard time with this and I candidly, in conversation with Tammy, before I was an administrator, I coached for 10 years, I coached three sports and my wife's a phys ed teacher, you know, I played college athletics and sports isn't that in my head and I had to get over that. And it was a cultural shift for me and I had to come to the realization that if you take away the movement part of it, what are all of the other things that you want out of a child, a student being part of an athletic team? It's feeling like you're part of something. It's that accountability, it's the collaboration, it's the communication, it's that sense of team, it's all of those things that esports gives you in a much different way, but it's also very similar. And we have an opportunity that nobody else in New York State outside of the NAREC has right now, which is kind of cool. And I'm really not going to read off the slides, I'm just going to give you kind of a little bit of a justification. So right now, esports is available through our NAREC, through a company called Playversus. Playversus's existence is to provide a platform for schools to have esports programs that are outside of the web. Well, I guess that's a bad example. Outside of the outside world. They're trying to provide a place where structured schedules and school-based teams can play and they don't have, you know, adults in another country screaming obscenities at them as they're playing. It's geared to be a safe gaming environment. So in this past couple of months, since the advent of this esports program, over 80,000 students have signed up. 13,000-plus schools have signed up for this. They are offering three games essentially across one platform on Playversus. They chose three games, League of Legends, Smite, and is it Rocket League? Rocket League. And I guess the biggest question we get with those titles is, are they appropriate? All the games that are sponsored through NAREC Esports and Playversus are all rated T for team. So it's a game that a ninth and eighth grader could walk into any game store and buy without a parent. They do have some levels of violence, but it is nothing that's considered graphic violence. Rocket League is like cars in a soccer ball, so it's more of an athletic-style game than anything else. I think the biggest, as I started researching all of this, the number that kind of surprised me the most is if I asked you a question said, what's the most possible, what's the most popular sport in America? I think everyone would know it, it's football. And what's the most watched athletic event in the United States?
Superbowl.
The Superbowl. And that's correct, 107 million viewers. Last year, the League of Legends World Championship worldwide pulled almost 200 million viewers, but they had 100 million viewers in the United States. So, and this is only gaining in popularity. And these student athletes are winning real money. This is, it's.
I'm only worth 50,000 dollars.
Yeah, it's not fictitious. And schools are, you know, schools are jumping, you know, onto this and colleges are building esports, you know, teams and esports arenas and they're giving esports scholarships. So all the things that we connect to athletics are 100% part of this. So just a couple of quick details and I'd be more than happy to give you guys a full proposal on this and I will. So essentially, right now, it's a partnership between NAREC, the Northeast Regional Information Center, Playversus, which is the platform that houses it, and NFHS, and that started this past fall.
NFHS.
I'll explain that in two seconds. The NAREC is the only RIC in New York State that is supporting esports at this time. So if you go out west and you go to the next RIC, which is the MORIC, they are not sponsoring esports. My guess is, you know, in the coming year, they will be. So we actually get to jump out in front of the curve. Playversus is the site that's hoping it, that's, excuse me, hosting it. They provide the leagues, the infrastructure, and they provide the scheduling. They do something that's called a Swiss hybrid schedule. What that means is, if you're a new team and you go out and you're struggling that first week and you struggle that second week, you only get two weeks of schedule at a time. Because what they do is they actually take your ability level and then they reschedule you against teams that have like abilities. So you don't have the number one team playing the number 12,000 team on a weekly basis. What I didn't realize is when you go on the Playversus website, they're giving you highlights of matches, actually video feed of school-based competition. There's a schedule across the country of the students, the schools that are playing in these esports arenas. The other thing that they give you is on-demand IT support. So anything that they can do to help you infrastructure-wise or getting that connection set up, they give to you for free as part of their setup fee. The NFHS is the National Federation of High School Sports. This is the governing body that if, as a football coach, at the beginning of the season, you get the updated NFHS handbook and it has the rules. If there's a new rule in modified football that you can't have motion come towards the quarterback, that's going to be in the updated book. This is, they're responsible for writing the rules of competition. Playversus and NFHS have an agreement. So this is, it's only a matter of time before now an esports program is going to get that book of this is the allowable conduct, these are the allowable things, they're going to regulate it like any other esport. In terms of how it would be regulated inside the school district, an esports sports athlete would actually have a double code of conduct. They would have an athletic code of conduct, but they would also have an online gaming code of conduct. Because when they leave here, you know, you can leave football practice, it's hard to have another organized football practice somewhere else. It's easy to leave an esports practice and then go practice in your own arena at your home. But much like any other sport, you can only play one title. They're offering three titles, you can't play all three of them because they, they're viewing it as a varsity sport. You get to play one sport, you can't play all three of them. So it's, they are running it like a traditional sports program, which is really interesting.
Who creates that code of conduct?
That is something that ultimately we would create and house.
James has been working on it, actually.
And then it would be something that's brought to you before we enroll in the league in the spring. And then I took this off the Playversus website, which is pretty interesting. And they did a national study of the average cost of esports versus traditional sports. The average cost for a traditional sport is roughly $700 per athlete. When you factor in equipment and coaching and traveling and all those things, it costs us $64 per student athlete to be on an esports program. That's what we pay Playversus. There's also a $950 fee to NAREC for the organization of it all. And NAREC actually provides coaches training, coaches meetings, things like that. All of that is COSER-able. So we actually wouldn't pay $64, we pay 20% of $64. Same thing with the $950 esports fee, it's a COSER amount. So we get 80% of any of those costs back the following year. And it's, they flat-out say they're targeting, you know, non-traditional athletes and people who don't identify sometimes with being part of a sports program that are avid gamers. And we have, we have a lot of students that are going home and doing this and it's a chance to bring them back into school, to make them part of the school's family in a different way and to really get a different type of buy-in. And also now, you know, putting them under the code of conduct and, you know, watching them where they're needing, you know, a closer eye as we would any other athlete. If there's anything I forgot, Ms. Jones, please, to be objective.
Uh, no, but it's, James has been, and several of the other students have been pestering me for years and basically when they rolled out those Chromebooks, they cornered me and said, so, we helped with all these Chromebooks and they're rolled out and you kind of owe us, so you're going to be our coach, right? And I just kind of looked and went, uh, sure. I have a lot to learn.
And that'll all be part of the proposal that'll follow about the creation of the Kenji Harry esports team or club to start with. This year, the.
I had one quick thing. I just wanted to let you know that some of the seventh graders that I said we might have something like this, they said, oh, we might have left Kenji Harry, but now that we know this might be coming, we might stay in the district or we go to high school.
We already started, actually, we purchased four MSI laptops this year for the CSI program, which are gaming-specific laptops, or excuse me, three.
Three.
We purchased three. We have roughly with the, I presented to the tech committee at our last meeting, when we reworked the SSIP with the cost savings from just a couple of things coming in cheaper than we anticipated, we have roughly $6,200 in SSIP money. It was my recommendation to them, for them to consider that we purchased four more. The key number of seven gaming laptops, basically a esports team has seven players, five of them which are playing at any given time and two alternates. So it'll follow a schedule much like any other sport. You'll have, right now, they have Tuesday games, they have Thursday games. One title plays on Tuesday, two titles play on Thursday. And I think to start, Ms. Jones had talked about just getting our feet wet with one of the titles, which I think was League of Legends, seems to be the most popular, and moving forth from there. And we hope that we can get it in motion for the February meeting.
That's awesome.
Yeah. This, this $64, do they take, how do they calculate that? Are they looking at the investment that you're making plus the fees for the, all these years?
They're not. The $64, and that's, I guess, part of the illusion in the numbers. The $64 is the Playversus fee, which is a flat rate fee per student athlete. Right now, we have, I think, 16 students that have expressed interest.
16 that expressed interest, yeah. I have a feeling once we get going, there were four girls, I was very excited about that.
So round numbers, about $1,000 in that fee, $950 to NAREC, so we're talking round numbers, $2,000, 80% of it comes back the following year. So a long run cost for 16 athletes would be $400.
I get nagged every day.
Plus the computer that we get reimbursed 80%.
Unlike any other sport, the equipment, when purchased through COSER, well, the SSIP ones are grant money, so they actually, they would be purchasing them through the grant. In future SSIPs, because there is more money available to us, we could purchase them through that. If we purchase through COSER, we get 80% of our equipment back and no other sport, we can get money back for what we purchased.
Now, if we have 20 roughly people interested and we can only have seven on a team, how are we going to do that?
So you are allowed to have, say we choose to play one title and we have 15 students interested, we can have two teams. You can have a Kenji Harry one and a Kenji Harry two for League of Legends. They play separate schedules, they could even play each other. The only time that affects somebody, and the students would know this at the onset, Ms. Jones and I actually talked about this, if you make a state, because there are state playoffs, there are national playoffs, League of Legends actually just talked about starting a World Cup for League of Legends. If you make state playoffs, you can only have one team, so you actually field your best team throughout your two teams. So if Team One has three great players and Team Two has two great players, you would move them together, take your two reserve players and move forward with one united Kenji Harry team. Other than that, you can have infinite number of teams.
So the only conflict becomes if they have games, the same night and you have a computer.
They don't. They are, the league is tact, they've, they were very tactical with how they're deploying games. Your game, do I make scheduled game time that everyone playing League of Legends across New York State is playing? So I think League of Legends is 4 o'clock on Tuesday, Smite is 4 o'clock on Thursday, and Rocketball is 5:30 on Thursday. So there's never a time or a scenario where I'm playing League of Legends, Mr. Ferguson cannot use the computer for his Smite game.
No, 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 I didn't mean that. If you have, I interpret what you said, three League of Legends teams, they're all playing on the same.
Yes. You don't, the gaming laptop, think of it as the $300 softball bat. You can still play softball with the $100 softball bat. Maybe it gives you an advantage and things like that. We absolutely can use the better laptops in the school to conduct the gaming. Students can bring some of their own things, not laptops, but controllers, devices, mice, things like that that are gaming specifics that just plug in and play. But we can absolutely, the better I7 computers that we have and laptops that we have, you're not going to have the same type of graphics processing, but you're going to have computer processor-wise upkeep, broadband capability, things like that.
I'm surprised to hear from Ms. Mitty, who actually plays League of Legends, that the League of Legends game is on the computer, actually takes up very little space. It's actually quite a small thing to put on a computer.
And would the games be played by the students being here?
Yes. Like any other sports unit, we would, you know, whether we dedicated a room or, you know, an area, it would become the esports arena, so to speak.
And could anyone be a spectator?
That'd be a good problem to have. I mean, if you watch on television now, you have arenas filled with people watching people playing a video game on a screen.
Yeah, I think it's a legitimate question.
Yeah, that's a problem that we haven't solved yet, but absolutely, we are... I'm sure Mr. Bittin will be happy to solve that with us.
I already saw.
So we absolutely, I mean, there's no reason that if this is infectious enough that the stage doesn't become the arena and the new projector doesn't become the venue for students to watch what's going on or parents to watch what's going on. I mean, we have the infrastructure to do it. It's just the execution of some things that we don't know what we expected.
And do they have the same age limits, like varsity sports and things like that? Do they follow those same rules too?
There's nothing that I've read with it that says anything aside from T for teen. It's not, I haven't read anything that's like 13 to 18-year-old or ninth grade to 12th grade. So that's a living and breathing thing that I couldn't answer right now.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
I got a question, Ms. Jones.
Yeah.
So let's say you've got Kennedy Harry's team is scheduled to play against a team in Long Island or something, right? And there's a snow day here but not there. They're still going to be able to have their game?
I don't know. I don't know how the delay, those types of things would work out. My guess is the game wouldn't take place because scheduled matches take place at a specific time. If it's a state championship type of thing or playoff type of thing, I'm sure they would have to make some type of arrangement, just like they do for any other playoff game. But just like a varsity baseball game can be rained out and not rescheduled if it's not a game that's pivotal for playoffs, same thing could happen. Thank you, Dan.
Thank you.
Okay. I have a question. We would like along with having a student representative report.
So a couple of weeks ago, trick of fingers had come to the school. And the students here were very receptive. And as the students were going throughout the school, they were getting pencils and candy. And there was no shortage of smiling faces. The high schoolers made sure that they felt welcome. The Halloween dance was a success with 130 students attending it and wearing costumes. The first movie night was going to be on the 7th of December at 5:00 p.m. And the theme is a Polar Express pajama party. And there, there's going to be popcorn, hot chocolate, and candy. The principal's cabinet started up. And we had our first meeting two days ago.
Yesterday.
Yesterday. Yes. And we're going to be focusing on building positivity and community. Pop fast sports are over and students are looking forward to starting the winter sports. And the fill-the-bus-foo drive is going to be continuing. And there are always donations welcome.
Any questions?
Yeah, I have one. Who is sponsoring the movie night?
History Nada and me. We're all kind of working on it together.
And is Polar Express the movie that's being shown?
That's the movie.
Any pictures of Halloween costumes?
I don't have any of them.
You might be slow in the drive.
It's just because it's always nice to have, you know, a social media presence when fun events like this happen. So I would just encourage them in the future to make sure that you do have some, you know, record of that that we post on their website or our Facebook page and our Instagram, Twitter and all. Okay, thank you. Anything else? All right. Okay, the next thing is a report from the Transportation Committee.
Okay, this evening, and the request is to put up three bus leases this year as part of our annual schedule. They're rotated every five years. I think the cost before state aid was around $17,475 per year for the buses. So looking to 2000, $17,475 before state aid. There also was discussion tonight about replacing the vans on an eight-year schedule instead of the 10-year schedule because there's been a lot more mileage on it. Traveling down this circle a lot for special needs and other things.
We did have a extra van, I think, last year. Is it because of the short runs that they were having to do?
They had a financing number. He was mentioning. We wanted to work that out. And I'm sure you're not surprised that they're also looking to replace the pickup that wasn't able to be replaced last year.
Yeah, we didn't do that last year. Yeah. Did you guys talk about, is it necessary or nice?
There's necessity is there. And then it's also, you know, backing up to do replace another vehicle as well.
We could push that in back.
So one of the requests we had was to get the mileage and years and the physicality of the vehicles. And I proposed the van and the truck and the regular budget process. In terms of priorities. The buses obviously are...
Yeah, they're no problem. We have to do these runs. But I just want you to know, we did do an extra van last year.
Okay.
Because they were racking up a lot of extra miles for a lot of short trip kind of stuff.
Small trips, huh?
Yeah.
You said that may have been $30,000.
I mean, one of the things I'd like to add in terms of getting information about these vehicles is, I'd like to know what kind of shape the bodies in, what kind of shape it encagued in. I mean, just a number, an arbitrary number of years does not equate to, you know, a vehicle being not trustworthy or useful. It may be. I mean, I'm prepared to accept that. But I would just like to get a better sense of, you know, how we're coming up with these decisions to replace vehicles. I think an arbitrary number of years is not sufficient in my mind without knowing, you know, the basis for that determination.
Well, I think he went from it for eight years for eight vehicles. So this way you're replacing one every year instead of on a 10-year cycle. And what they're looking at, the way that I understood it, was they're looking at the body of the vehicle. If there's a certain amount of rust on it and whatnot, they cannot transport students.
That's true for the transport stuff.
Yeah, so, you know, just looking at the minivan, I'm not talking about the pickup. So I know that, you know, and that they can use it for errands, you know, one of the bank or...
And we kept some thumbnail runs and stuff like that.
Yeah, that kind of stuff. Anyway, he's looking in trying, is going to provide more information.
That was the discussion we had last year about the truck. And he, what they said to us is they had just done some repairs and they felt comfortable that the body was fine and the repairs were carried through.
I think the body was broken in the...
You're able to fix it. It bent a little bit. They're doing some work and fix it. But we'll see how it holds out for this one.
I mean, I certainly want a dependable and safe truck, but I just wanted, you know, to be comfortable that we really need.
I think William was worried about if we get closer to the other one, you know, the other ones in terms of replacement. Maybe the same case. You may be able to pull one in too early, but if you don't, now we're talking two years in a row, $50,000 in trucks. We want to carry that out. And talking about, you know, we go out and do we contract out for that stuff? But if you do math over a certain amount of years of contract prices, it could be possible to take it through with our guys.
Anything else in transportation? Any other questions? Health Insurance Committee. But do you want to speak on it? Or do you want me to just let the updates in?
Sure. I can speak on it. We met last week, I think?
Yeah.
Yes. Last week. And we actually had the vendor in and we went over some plan options. And it was a joint meeting with, we have a set committee that's meeting. It's a joint of union and different faculty, staff across the district. And Mark and myself as board members and then administration. And also the union representatives. There's two union representatives. One who is kind of a insurance expert.
Oh, oh, oh.
Patty's insurance expert. We basically reviewed three options and asked for them to do some work on combining one of the options with a different option. They didn't show us that combination and we were interested in that. Things look promising. It looks like we can probably make something work. And I think everyone's going into this with a good approach on trying to find solutions. Retirees is another facet. Yeah, retirees, we've looked at as well. And it turns out that the insurance industry itself in terms of offerings has changed from a retirement health insurance coverage perspective. And it looks like we could change to this new venue and have some significant savings potentially and have relatively equal or better benefits. So it looks pretty promising.
Next quarterly financial report.
This is the first quarterly budget status report. Most things are in cover that can be in cover at this time. And Dr. Stewart has sat down and already on the mark with literally the last year of this year.
I have one question. I just wasn't sure where the increase to the budget came from. 114...
Those are last year's encumbrances that we're on.
That was the carryover? Okay. Thank you.
And I have a question. This, the date on this is from 7/1/19 to 6/30/2020.
Yeah, it's through the end of October. There's literally a date on the bottom.
So that shows encumbrances through the 7th of November?
Okay, so it's not actually, this is not showing through June?
Well, it's current at that time. Current on the 7th. As of December.
It's not showing through June because it's, we're not in June yet.
I understand, but I was thinking, I was wondering, is this a projection of where we'd be as of June?
No.
So this is just where we are right now. So this $2.8 billion that is still available is money that we would spend between now and June? Or some portion of it?
Yep.
Okay, thank you. That was my confusion.
Being large portion.
I know, I mean, just looking at the dates on the top, it's confusing. I was very happy that we might have to go in.
I would be doing a dance in the street. Come on. As we get into budget season, but for fun balance, yeah.
Okay, any other questions on the quarterly report? Okay, thank you. Next, we have non-resident policy concerns.
Yes, we had a policy committee meeting last month at 7/1/31. We put the tuition, as we know, in place. And then there was some questions brought up by community members who wanted to look at certain things. And one was if you own land in the district, if that money, if you're paying school taxes to the district, will be offset by tuition. And that's a 3202 rule in New York State, which it does, so it offsets. So if somebody pays $2,079 for their land taxes, that would go directly towards the offset tuition for any students that would be in the district. So if somebody had two students, it would cover the two students for that year. And there was a change, there was a comment about a change in policy depending on the number. Looking at land ownership, so for example, could the Board of Education put a policy in place? If you own, I'll give you an example, if you owned 150 acres or more in the community, if that could be used as a caveat to, I wouldn't necessarily say be a resident, but an opportunity for the students to go to school tuition-free because they're, that was the the policy that we created for the district. I think that's...
And be considered as if they were in disguise.
Correct. And then the other... Isn't that second one generally encompassed by the first one? Is there going to be taxes on that large number of acres? I think there's some tie-in. It does. But I think there's also some tie-in in terms of the assurance more than anything.
Yeah.
Is that correct?
There's, yeah.
I know exactly what you're saying.
Yeah, I'll just introduce myself. My name's Shannon Digger. My husband and I own a dairy farm right on the border of Kennedy Harry, Fort Plain. My husband went to Fort Plain school. We have four kids. And when it came time for our oldest to go to school, we chose to send him to Kennedy Harry. He's in second grade right now and then we have the daughter that's in first. Our other two kids, Tucker, he'd be starting kindergarten next year, and the youngest is two. As in, yes, we pay taxes to Kennedy Harry. We love to send our kids here. But the not knowing is the hardest part as a parent. Knowing that, yes, we can pay the tuition for the two older kids, but like next year, if there's not an opening, Tucker, our youngest, can't go to Kennedy Harry. We just want that assurance that our kids, our family can go here. That I can't send kids to Fort Plain to here, to here. I can't do that. So it's either, it's not knowing, even if, say, Tucker gets in. When it comes time for Cassidy, will she be able to go? Like if we're going to switch our kids, we're going to have to switch them next year. We can't, and I'd hate to do that to them because we love the school district, we love the teachers, we love everybody. But it's so hard not knowing and to know that we are like, we're right there, you know, and granted, just move our house. Or can we put up a mailbox? Or, you know, it's, you know, we can put up a little Amish-type house, you know, not have running electric with that and put a mailbox and say that's where we live. You know, can we do that? Can we send our kids there? You know, it's just hard not knowing. And knowing that we pay all this in taxes and, you know, and we're involved and we want to be involved in the school district and it's just hard not knowing. I didn't know of the board if there's any way that you can just, and I know other families too. If you have kids in the school district, their siblings can go. Like that's, if you gave me that answer, I'd be like, okay, we're sending them. But is there any way that the board can do something in this transition period where, you know, if a family has a child already going and they have siblings, can those siblings go? Or is there anything that we can do?
So can I add to that?
Yes.
So we actually didn't change that. That part of the policy has been the same since I've been around and it's all based on an open. So is that something we could reconsider? We can always reconsider, but I just want you to know, we didn't change that. That's actually been in existence for years. So it's definitely, we set the policies, so it's definitely something that can be considered. But I didn't want you to think that that got changed all of a sudden because it's... of that.
No. And I know if, we don't want to, we don't want to incur extra costs from a family by hiring an extra teacher or something like that. And I know right now the class limit is, I believe, like up there, so there's not a lot of openings, especially in the young grades. So the, the chances are next year, you know, for our son to go, most likely. And I had questions about out of district kids, like submitting your application. How are you gonna, you have ten people, you know, that's sending out, how is the board going to decide or the school district going to decide who's, who they're going to accept? Or is it first come, first served, you get your, you know? There's a lot of questions, you know, on how you're going to do that.
Those are great questions and again, those aren't changes and administration has had to deal with that all these years. Yes, so, and I can't answer that because I don't make those decisions. That would have to be somebody from administration.
Don't be afraid, like we've been back and forth and always, you got more of those questions, keep firing them at me and I'll, and I'll always research them for you, you know what I'm saying? And come up, so, and I'm going to jot the one down that you just mentioned too about the, you have the first come, you know, just to make sure we get everything right.
What's the application process?
Well, they, they submit the application and.
There's a deadline, but I don't know.
There's a deadline, but I don't know if it's been a lottery or anything like that here, I don't think it's been that correct.
Yeah.
So we'll look at exactly what that will be.
And I think so far from our earlier conversation, we've never had to have somebody leave after that started.
That's what we try hard not to do.
But that's still with.
Yeah, okay. Leaving meaning not because of the numbers, but because of.
Not because of the numbers.
That's what I meant, because of numbers.
But other aspects of policy.
Right, right, right. I meant because of the numbers.
We tend to be careful not to turn that back.
Yeah, those are different things, yep.
That's why we try to keep some buffer because we know that could be two students that might leave at any time and we hate in January to say, oh, by the way, you're, you're asked that year, so.
But, but we can't rule that out, like say they get into, they could be asked to leave. If you got, if you got.
Right.
Although as Scott said, that's never happened, we had to set someone out strictly based on calculation question, there's always been some other issue that hasn't, hasn't paid that necessarily.
Is it going to hurt the school district, like I know there's already something or close to forty out of district kids, say twenty-five of these kids decide they're going back to their home school districts, that they don't, can't, you know, afford to pay the tuition and, you know, is it going to hurt the school district more losing twenty-five kids and getting the a thousand dollars for the handful that's left?
So we discussed that at the last meeting that Mark referred to and we discussed it multiple times in policy, in the public policy meetings and we got all those answers before we actually brought it back to the board to discuss. And the answer was it was pretty much a wash. That really didn't make a difference. Because of the aid, what happens with aid?
Oh, it doesn't matter if those kids.
In terms of expenditure versus, expenditure versus what you're getting in versus what you're losing.
Right.
It's, it's.
Doesn't the.
The difference was time free, it was timey, so it really didn't come into the discussion. But we did ask that question.
Does the district get the same amount per, if you're out of district or in district, correct?
Yes. Same amount of aid per student.
For a student. So the school district's going to do that one?
Could be future earnings, yes, could be. Depending on the state. There's, the state aid will tell you, office will tell you is, as you continue to drop enrollment, there's a possibility that you're going to not get any future increases, which are never going to go down. And the state has fixed it where you never get less state, but it could impact your future increases due to, if you see a district that's constantly declining enrollment, thirty, forty students every year, three or four percent, they might not give you future earnings, but they'll never lower what you're earning.
But those are great questions, those are questions that we asked in the policy meeting to try to understand all those barriers.
I guess another question, do we look back at policy committee again and to broach the two subjects again or do you want to continue to talk?
I understand, I understand the family situation and I honestly don't remember our policy committee meeting conversation about that off the top of my head. I know we talked about it and we didn't change anything that was existing, so we didn't address that differently.
But it hasn't been an issue with accepting, pretty much if you're an out of district child before, you were accepted up until this last year, correct? Where they said, it's getting kind of full, we're not going to accept it. I don't believe, in the past have we accepted pretty much, has Kansas County accepted pretty much everybody that's applied out of district?
Not certainly. It's been affected by size of it.
Oh, so, yeah.
And resources, totally. Yeah, yeah, so those are a whole bunch of different factors.
Yeah, so there has been issues in the past.
There has been.
And I think going to a unilateral, it's tough to create a policy that's not unilateral for everyone, so and legal definitely made that recommendation, you know. For example, our fifty acres, but what about persons having forty-nine acres? And so it's, it's a tough area to tread.
Yeah, the, the family case is the only one that I think we could look at from a legality perspective and maybe, maybe make some modifications from that perspective. And I don't, I don't want to kind of rehash the discussion we had last time on this, but we did extensively look at this. I mean, our policy meeting was covered over a couple of months because of the questions we were asked to try to make sure we had answers to. And.
Next policy meeting we'll put that.
Yeah, I think we should, I think we should revisit the.
Yeah, it would be nice if you maybe sent out a letter to all the out of district families and say, this is, you know, we're thinking about this, is that we're going to have a meeting, please come voice your concerns to involve, you know, instead of, like I found out through a friend, but instead of getting a letter in the mail, you know, it would have been nice to have something else to be involved a little bit before the decision.
Thank you for that feedback. And one of the reasons we actually wanted to address it earlier rather than later was so the families had time to make considerations and things like that. So as, as a board, we did talk about that, so thank you for that feedback.
And as well, obviously nothing is changed in this story. And as new questions or information come to us, like with the woman who addressed the board in the public session, in the public, you know, comments section, when we do meet with her, some questions or ideas may come up that would also be something that would cause us to reconsider some of these issues. So, you know, we certainly want to do it fairly and, and, you know, thoroughly, so. All right. Moving along, future presentation topics. What I would like to suggest is the following, that we, we could just have a kind of a throwing out of possible topics if anyone, someone has had time to think of any.
Can we take that to the next meeting? Can we take that to the next meeting?
Well, what I wanted to say is that I think what we should, next meeting, next month we only have one meeting and usually these types of topics are ones that are for the second meeting. So what I'd like to suggest is let's throw out any topics that people have to suggest tonight, we can have more thrown out next month and then we can at least pick the one that we'll have for January and, and as well hopefully at the next meeting, we'll pick ones for the, for the many months of this, this school. So that would be my suggestion, if that's agreeable. So why don't we just start, if you don't have anything then that's fine, but come up with something for next month.
I have one that I think was outstanding that we really like us to come back to, which was the, the calendar for. Curriculum calendar, I think it was, curriculum calendar is what we called it. So that we had a cycle that everybody knew was going on and when curriculum changes would happen and when they were going to be all that kind of stuff because we really didn't have one and we talked about it at one point and there's some discussions, but we've never really brought that to closure. So that was one I had outstanding that, that wanted us to.
Tell me any additional detail.
Yeah.
Do you want to add that to it?
There, there was a draft of ideas that was presented in the board meeting, so there's something in board docs somewhere.
What do you think? Last year?
Yeah, it was last year.
Okay.
It was last year. I don't remember what time of year it was, so I'm sorry.
Okay. And Jen, next month high schools.
High schools for something.
Yeah, just test scores and some things they're doing with, they're starting practices.
I think something that might be good also is to find out a little bit about our extracurriculars. So we know that we're supporting them in the best way that we possibly can and what our student involvement is and what types of fundraising is going on and how applicable it is and, or not and if it needs to be, you know, that kind of thing. So we have some kind of, I think it would be helpful for our community to have some kind of fundraising calendar so we know what's going on instead of, you know, not knowing, I mean, I, I find out about stuff because my husband works in the district, but a lot of people might not and they might be like, oh, the poinsettias, I remember when my kids used to buy those, I'd like to do that and still support the district and have those. So something like that might be good for out there, using our social media and whatever. So if we had some kind of presentation of knowing what that is and then making sure that we're supporting.
I have four things to talk about. One is, which we've already talked about, is a report back on the one one program, but I'd also like to tie that into also other ideas for increasing program engagement. So we back that plus.
Can I add something to that?
No.
It might also be good to tie that to the socio-emotional trends that you're seeing and maybe how we need to address those things because I think that's really tightly connected.
The second one is exploring distance learning.
Great, okay.
The third is how are we developing our ability to teach collaboration, critical thinking and all, speaking skills throughout our district? And another would be exploring models for community engagement of students. A lot of different schools have a lot of different models and I would love to.
Is there a.
Exploring models for community engagement by our students. A lot of different schools have different ways to approach it, some have it as a requirement for graduation, some, you know, and there's been just a lot of different, you don't have to invent a wheel, I'd like to see what wheels are out there and what parts of those wheels might be appropriate to our, our school district.
And what we're already doing, what we're already doing because it sounds like some of our kids are already doing.
Yep.
We'll see an update this week on what we talked about with, with our big economics class for this year, about time required, community service, you know, so I mean, the ten or twelve minutes, that's your community service. And the students that I found in the north back there, we, we look to create different, you know, organizations that, that the kids can choose from. So, I mean, we see what the others were doing last, last week, kind of tied it to this.
So obviously these are not decision installments, it's just my suggestion, your suggestion, you'll have other suggestions and then we can discuss it next month, decide and work out a schedule for the rest of the school.
I would add another one to that list. We, we talked about how do we have the trip kind of stuff that happened with the social studies class and how do we build that in, that experience? Remember when the students came and talked about on Washington DC and we talked about, well, how do we enable our students somewhere in high school to have that experience so that we have some model that allows people to, allows our students that might not otherwise have the opportunity to be able to experience that somewhere in high school? Where they get out of the community, they go see something historical or cultural or whatever, right, that's new and different for them.
I know the PTA.
One thing I'd just like to ask, anyone wants to say, I usually recognize people from the audience, but please raise your hand first, you recognize, okay.
Oh, no, I just, I've been going to the PTA meetings and I know it's like teachers fly or talk to the PTA, they can get funding through the PTA, but maybe that makes something.
Just locally based, that's something I've been trying to get off the ground for probably the last four years is a local history tour for the district, hadn't got a lot of traction in the past, but I have approached it with the history teachers who at least cover American history, there's a lot in the area. I've spoken with this multiple times with the Palatine Kansas County area historians, the county historian Kelly Parkway of the Buchi. I've spoken with local reactors, former Mohawk chief Tom Porter, a lot of people who are, you know, living history on the area to get involved and there's been a lot of people who want to get involved. I'm also a member of the Chamber of Commerce, they would like to be involved in some way. I think it'd be a good way to get people to see what's right in front of them. Speaking again as an alum, I didn't learn really anything about local history until after I graduated and kind of developed an interest in it. So if it was something that I, I can help out in, in getting it set up, I'm more than happy to do that.
Blake Smith has a local history class that he taught and my daughter just absolutely loved it.
Yeah, and.
Did you talk to them about it?
I, I have talked to Blake.
Sorry.
I didn't, I didn't get any follow-up, but I have talked mostly with like Terry and Joe down in middle school about it.
Why add to the presentations? Okay, then, moving along, board committees. Okay, well, as, as I bring forth, there's a goal on the, on the school board and so we, we need to be, configure some committee assignments. One of the things that I think would probably be helpful, Scott and I have talked about this, is that someone other than myself joining on the finance committee so that we have, you know, spread out the knowledge on that. So that would be one thing that I would suggest is a change and the rest is open for discussion. I would, I would configure, obviously we're going to have a fifth member of the board that we're going to afford, so it's not like we have to, you know, take all those spots, but I think at this point we can kind of reconfigure if we must move around of the four of us, this would be the time to do so if you have any suggestions. While we can also wait until next month, if you need, if you want to, now we have the risk in front of you to access. Your choice.
I would really want to be on the policy committee to have that, to be able to disprove and special.
Now, the question is, what do you want to do? You know, you want to.
Well, we already took out a scholarship.
Scholarship's gone.
Okay, so there it is. There you go, done. Okay?
It must have been historic that you're building some grounds, just.
Going to ground to discuss things like, is it solar magic and that? And, and any issues about capital, capital projects and all that, in terms of conceptually?
Okay, so as we get closer to that solar reset we were talking about, we'll pitch it to there when it comes to that, right? Okay, makes sense.
If you have three members of the committee or they have four, so are they in the committee needs?
We don't have, we still have three, no?
No, some are right off the committee.
Are you going to take?
Oh, yeah, I'm leaving the finance committee and first is that, because all around the finance committee.
The policy committee.
The policy committee.
Yeah. And I think, I think what we should also consider is whoever the new person is possibly going to the policy committee. Is that what they're more of? I don't know, what will happen to me this kind of thing?
Okay, so we can talk about that in separate, but for now, we make those two moves.
Yeah.
Okay, is that a ripple?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, can you move along then?
To make a motion for consent agenda.
Um, that's what I was gonna ask for, steered by Fender.
Well, it's nine fifteen.
Okay, so there's a motion by, okay. And all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so you try along, so that'll be A three K, correct?
Correct.
So anything on minutes of October tenth or October twenty fourth?
There was, actually, I'm sorry, we can't do consent agenda. We have to take a minutes off.
Okay, so it's A three K, so we have time to hold on, separate hold on minutes.
The twenty fourth, the minutes for the twenty fourth, it starts as a special call meeting. And it doesn't, that's a normal.
Um, I have one, which is one short thing, which is that for the twenty fourth, it serves the board members who are present, which also indicate that board members have wraps and which would be stopped.
In the future, if you want, and I only need this before the board meeting, I always come in any, so.
Probably he can put to consent on this.
No, I can't.
He has to, he has to stay.
Yes, I understand, yes, but that way I can make those changes.
But we can still make a motion if there's friendly objections.
Okay, so that's in our minutes, treasures report and comments there. And I have just one, listing of the check numbers and the rounds. There, I mean, it can be if it's not what it was, but it does really add to the show. I mean, it doesn't have to be.
I had two questions.
Is that what I'm talking about?
I couldn't remember what the Heartland and Mint system was.
It's kind of a, I'm looking at one of the kids' school.
Okay, I just couldn't remember what it was. I had no question on the chart. I just couldn't remember what it was. And then the other question was the Omni Group? What are they? I couldn't remember.
That's the four three D contributions that people make on paychecks.
Okay, thank you.
Just goes to one company and then they just throw six companies.
Thank you.
Spare you all any kind of calculations.
Thank you.
Any other questions on the treasures report? Okay, then hang along to Bill's. Any questions there?
I have a couple. Who and what is Helen Funter?
Tie question exactly.
I didn't recognize that one at all.
That is a company that the bus garage does, and that was two, but we do the washway, the bus garage.
All right. And my second one was Kiefer and Ellie Aquatics for thirty eight thousand five hundred. What did we have?
Those are the two expenses that we approved last year to our eldest son. So those were the pool blocks and.
That was the touchpads.
Yeah, there's new stuff up there, yeah.
I remembered the touchpads, but it also, but it also looked at, it was a transfer in the budget transfers under repairs or something.
Yep, I wanted to show it as an expense so we see what I've got it, but we're going in and out.
So I remembered the pads, but because it was like a repair, I was like, oh, did something break?
No.
I wasn't sure what it was. Okay, thank you.
All right, then, anything else? I said one, Halyard slash New York, fifty seven eight fifteen.
Yes, that is something, that is a replacement part for one of those foresters. Foresters.
I didn't know.
Okay, so. So any other questions on those? Okay, budget transfers, any questions there? Another question. Okay, twenty twenty budget calendar draft, any questions there?
I did have some.
I had one question, the budget workshop, who participates in the budget workshop and who does that take place? In terms of, is that something that would be for finance committee or what is that for draft? I mean, it's kind of.
Isn't that what we usually do, is it?
No, there's three on the line here. I didn't know what it was either.
We don't have to have them all, just discussion.
So that would be the finance committee needs to discuss the budget?
It could be, and then every district has a different thing. Give us a, how to say, a template. Some districts we have realized, districts. That's fine, okay. We can make it.
Jen, generally, we've done, you've scheduled finance committees, I've needed to.
Yeah, it's been far more than three during the budget season. So we'll just keep the budget workshop out, we'll just schedule our finance.
Yeah, that's what we've done.
Cause I had never seen that.
And then the other question I had on this is, the last two years, we've kind of done this bottom-up staff recommendation suggestions. And I know that's not part of the formal process, but in thinking about this, I would think that you want to adhere that fits in here. Cause there's been good suggestions that have come out of that.
Right. It's also made more work.
It has made more work, but it's been good suggestions. We've adopted some of them every year. In terms of the program suggestions.
Yeah.
Yeah, so when we sent out a budget newsletter last week, there was anchor posters that they had for new courses, projects, programs. I'll create an entire list of everything.
Yeah.
And start to prioritize.
Okay.
Cause some of them were as simple as, you know, we should do these two things together instead of apart. We will save this and I want, you know. And so there've been good ideas that have come out of those things. I just want to make sure that's in there.
All of them?
And then we can decide what we want to talk about.
Perfect.
And they're due January sixth. Did you have one?
I have one more. The budget newsletter that's in here, I'm trying to look where it was now.
May eighth?
Could we please make that go out early?
Yes, that's just the deadline.
But if we're building our calendar, I will tell you when it arrives at my house. I have to go home and get my mail the day I'm coming to the meeting.
So let's do it the, you know, a couple of days after we prove them. Makes sense?
So a month before?
Yeah, that would be wonderful.
No, it's anything.
You won't have printing time for it, probably.
Yeah, at the month before that.
But we need to move it up because it literally gets delivered to my house the day we have the meeting here at the building.
Yes.
Yeah, the budget here.
That's the day it comes in the mail to my house.
We can have what we have done. We did three weeks prior, but we could have done it.
But I just.
It won't be the week before.
I just want to make sure that we move that up. It makes it really hard for me to even be prepared when we come to the budget meeting. I don't have the paper. I just pulled it out of the mailbox on the way here.
Anything else on the calendar? So can I move along to the response letter? Any questions there or comments?
I have one. We didn't really address the sales tax issue in the budget.
Of course, it's a. I feel bad on the calendar. I'm outside, I was for the course.
You mean in the response?
Yes.
It was a recommendation.
Well, the recommendation is from the auditor to us.
Right, and then if the response is just, we're gonna.
Well, yeah, we don't say anything, so I think, I think we should have a response that says we're gonna. I think what we talked about with the auditor was we're gonna implement instead of rules with our clubs.
Yes.
So we should put something in there that says, here's what our plan is.
Oh, I see.
Yeah.
It's just not broken out, is it? One B is like.
It's just hanging there.
Yeah, I say go over the start of the year and pretty much all of Jan used to. They'd all play together like a calendar, something like that. Correct, at the same week, but not the extra week.
Yep, perfect.
Have a training session.
Yep.
Okay, anything else on that? Okay, Palatine Jersey Home evacuation agreement, any questions there? Nothing different on that, I assume? School tax bill refund, any question there? Okay, AIS plan. Any comments or questions there?
Has to be updated, has to be approved every. What did you say, updated, has to be approved by the. That's pretty much what we do, but it's just a policy format.
I did have a couple of questions or comments about it. One is why is it K through six and seven through twelve versus K through five and it's six and twelve?
Some structures in place carry out through grade sets, especially in ELE, where we have that with one day series.
So it's working.
Yeah, and so some of how they're offering the academic services is stemming from that. So they kind of melds together in sixth grade is still essentially elementary.
I guess the other thing I wanted to, a couple of things I had, one is to identify those students in need of AIS in seven through twelve. I was wondering why, is, in the lower groups, it's testing, teacher evaluation. You know, the whole list of different criteria that collectively determine whether a student is in need of these services. In seven to twelve, it's region's results, period. I understand the portion regions results in terms of graduation, but I think it really shortens the ability to really make a valid assessment of students in need.
Well, it's also a very late assessment. It's at the end of the year.
Well, seventh and eighth grade, for example, as you're scoring a hundred and twenty, I'd say assessments of a seventh grader, we would look at sixth grader results. And then it says recommendation on teacher basic classroom performance and scoring significant level of I ready. So for seventh, eighth grade is three.
Well, I guess nine through twelve.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
That's what I was questioning. And again, I understand the portion regions, but I also understand the inputs of classroom performance and all the other things that go to student attendance and so forth. You know, I just, I mean, and even if this is just something we have to submit to the state just to satisfy that. I just think that I hope, I'm just wondering, is that our criteria?
It's not realistic, because you know, we're walking through ninth grade, so ninth grade should actually be different on there because we don't have any regions results coming in for ninth grades, except for those who are putting me out for our year's science.
So ninth grade, right now, a student fails to achieve, it doesn't mean performance level at eighth grade assessment. A student passes eighth grade, what is less than appropriate GPA. Student fails to achieve an appropriate GPA, we're gonna send them back to the first semester of the grade course. So we're looking at three different things for ninth grade, eligibility to actually. So we get to tenth grade to start using some of those because of that for state.
I'm just saying that I think that we should have more of a holistic approach at all. It's just, just a thought.
No, it was glaring to me as I read it too, that all of a sudden it got to a certain point, teacher assessment wasn't part of it anymore.
And as well, in looking at professional development as well, I mean, again, I was just concerned with the amount of reliance on state standardized testing as opposed to a more holistic assessment of what the needs are and what we need.
I think it would be more effective just looking back at some of the risks that were made when Patrick Burton was here. So we sat down together just for two eyes, looking at it, and there was things with classroom performance, student's performance previously. And there's also other things, so AIS isn't the only type of supports that we've been working on and offering this. Especially if we got the new failure list, where are we providing, how are we providing extra supports as an alternate clock period and so on? So that wouldn't necessarily be the, that'd be supports for the student. But you're right, we are factoring those pieces in and trying to formulate plans for those students.
So the question is, shouldn't we integrate that in?
I had a couple of comments as well. I found it interesting in the elementary school that math didn't get mentioned at all until you got to the chart at the end about entrance criteria or eligibility criteria. And when you get to the high school age, math is in like the second line. So at first, when I started to read it, I was like, oh, we don't care about math. But then when I got to that eligibility criteria, I saw that it was there. So I just wondered if there wasn't some way that it should have been incorporated in the beginning. That, not my judgment, it was just, it was an observation, that was all.
Where are you working?
Very beginning where you go through.
Grades K through six?
Grades K through six. You read through there, there's no math until you get to the chart at the end that says identification. And on number two, it says math and I ready assignments. If you go to high school, six through twelve. Math is identified.
But it's all, it's both subjects.
It doesn't even say ELA.
No, it's not ELA either. They're both, they're both mixed together. This is how we're doing it for both. So down and throughout, it's, you know, I ready diagnostic scores, which does include the math. Whereas the F and P is, so I'm looking at identification, F and P, that is your reading. So it does include both, word cards hitting both.
All right, perfect then, cause when math only showed up at that one place, I was like, okay, does that mean it's left out of the rest?
Hidden it, in other words, like I ready. That would be why, and I ready is actually very different. That's a read back from math series. And also provides us that our benchmarking assessment, so it's actually, it's, looks like one thing, but it's multiple.
Okay, cause I only remember the I ready from the reading stuff that we had.
It's reading and math assessments, and then we just adopted that math criterion.
All right, thank you. And then my last question was, do all of these exit criteria now line up with what the new state requirements are?
For AIS?
In other words, are the exit criteria, people are gonna meet whatever the new standards are gonna be? And I can't answer that question. It was just a question as I reflected on it. It should be a thing.
Yeah, I see what you're saying. So when a student is showing growth and we're making that growth support, you know, we're saying, okay, the student is now, we're trying to pinpoint the skill. Okay, so for example, identifying setting, give it elementary. Once a student has at that point demonstrated that skill, they're then, they're then, you know, ideally sent back to the classroom and perhaps receive a level two support, or if not in that case, then they have just the general supports in that classroom. So there is an adding flow, and then there might be another area where we're like, okay, that student, you know, they're on grade level there. That was their target for the AIS. So yes, they're showing that proficiency, but can I say that every student that is reading on a grade level a hundred percent? Because they might at the beginning of the year, we get them to the first benchmark there on letter K now, which is where they need to be. They might slip a little bit and go back and then go forth again.
No, I understand that, but I just want to make sure that we're lining that up, right? So that we're carrying. No, I understand that, but I just want to make sure that we're we're lining that up right, so that it, we're we're carrying them through to get them where they need to be according to the new standards.
Yeah, I can speak to the elementary specific, that we've just been embedded within that group and yes, but that's where we're working.
I understand that as well, I I got that, but I want to make sure that we're we're keeping them in until we get them where they need to be.
Correct.
Yeah.
That was it.
Okay, anyone else? Okay, and moving along to professional development, correct?
This is a template from the state, new issue.
Any comments or questions?
I have a couple of questions, um. I was curious, it was just a curiosity, on page three where it lists PD training occurs in a variety of settings. It's the last sentence under um um parentheses, out of district conference, conferences, online, um and print. Missing a period, but I I just wondered, we hold a lot more than that, as superintendent sessions, all kinds of things are.
That's just more examples, I guess, should just be example out of district.
Okay, because that just kind of implied that it was like, I have to go somewhere else, you know what I mean, rather than, we do a lot of this stuff in district.
Down below, when you look at each specific area, you'll see that.
Okay.
Um summer brick and uh brick and uh summer institute, it says down there, department meetings, it says.
Okay, perfect, perfect.
It probably, you're right, maybe we could put example out of.
I didn't want people to just think that, hey, this is all, I gotta go somewhere for a conference, or I gotta log into some course, or I gotta, you know.
Right. That's a good point.
And then um my last question came up as I was reading page ten, going through all these charts. Um they said this is a template.
That's true.
Or did we come up with these goals and stuff?
Yeah, the template was pretty consistent.
Okay, cause my, if it if it wasn't a template, my question was, have we had people involved in identifying these goals and stuff like that?
Pretty much a lot of maybe backing off of last year's, what we had, fit to this.
Okay.
And uh yeah.
I just wanted to ensure that.
Big blow in contention with the superintendent since they just came out, and maybe we had a template at all, and the state probably came through, and they won.
Yeah.
By actually, by that October, which nobody had it, and we were last superintendent, we were talking about that, the template, they never sent it.
So do faculty know about this yet?
This is just randomly out.
Okay, so. So is there, is there any room or should there be any room for you to have that conversation with faculty?
Yeah, I think that something that goes on.
There need to be some collaboration was really what I was getting at.
Yeah, I think so, to to some extent, um.
That was my question as I read through that, that was all, so.
I think this is more, can you really read in it, it's a lot, it's very generic.
Yeah, it was.
Maybe. This is to the state, and then we dive deeper as to the needs that we, like, last superintendent conference, we talked about any ideas that you guys might have, for example, with the the faculty for summer institute, and then their comments would come forward in terms of how we could create that summer institute. So um they had some ideas already, and then we do the same thing in in probably January, right, if you hear and ask again, if we don't know, there could be opportunities that they're looking for, and we create that summer institute, and then that's the new thing. So yeah, there's been a lot of that, so.
I just didn't know about the goals, well, the goals were a good thing or something, okay.
Anything else?
I hate to do this stuff, you know, if you're at the at the state, you would think they would even know what time, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
If they want the cookie covered, and then they want something, and uh, okay, you're finished, you know, and then we create our own, like, design and timing for the most part.
Yep, okay. The last one is code of conduct.
I I didn't see this earlier, I'm sorry.
Me neither.
If it was out there, I didn't see.
I would prefer to take it, just to be able to look at it a bit better.
I see. Code of conduct?
When I reviewed this, I didn't see it out there, so I don't know if I missed it, or.
Just.
Just at all, you know. It's been out there for a couple of months, and people were looking at it and rolling, something that should have probably been done during, uh, maybe during the year. Uh but it was very, as we went through the policy committee, as you guys know a couple of times with this, um it was more of updating verbiage that was not like DASSAism in there. For example, the whole thing, it was just updating, so. And the process was administration, um council, policy committee, back to council.
Yes, council.
Evo, yeah, they went through, Jen, we did, administration went through all of the little pieces that we thought, and we put questions next to everything in the Google Doc. And then uh two of the legal counselors went through it, like a fine-toothed poem, and gave us comments and recommendations back, and then we adjusted, and then Scott will know. Scott and Chris, we sat and put together and looked at each piece that was highlighted, and then made associated changes to that.
That was the point, that was mine.
Was it, yeah, remember you were making, when you and Chris, we made some changes in terms of the verb is the director and um.
Oh, was that this?
Yeah, I remember.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, okay.
Yeah.
I remember the director thing, I didn't realize that was in here.
And the DASSA piece, who would be the investigation.
Yes, I didn't remember that too. I didn't remember that being in in the code of conduct, sorry.
I mean, I, you know, at this point, we could definitely, Jen, let me go through.
That's, I just wanted to make sure that somebody had helped out at least.
It's the summary one. Definitely.
Yeah.
It's kind of neat, the rules, I'll say that you can go back and forth, and not in back and forth emails and shooting comments.
I just, you need to take this word off, the name is in here.
Yeah, we have to update, now of this as we go, yeah.
Is all of the highlight achievements?
Correct. Changes or inputs or additions?
I did get a chance to read it, I didn't have any problems, but it's what we just made that I have another, we were told that we need to approve it. The comparison is some changes.
I was just reading through the um board responsibilities, and there was a bunch of stuff I had. So are we gonna actually um enforce the dress code?
Um I hope so.
Okay.
Hmm, okay.
Sure.
Okay, do you have any questions?
And we put it up on the site, and we put document on now, that'll change it, that's very important, okay.
Okay.
Okay, everybody?
So my couple of issues for the first two minutes after, motion for good minutes?
Motion for minutes for the tenth first.
Second.
Um all in favor of the tenth?
Aye.
Um. Um.
Yep.
Motion for twenty fourth?
Motion.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Hold, stand?
Stand.
Okay, then we have the consent agenda, all in favor of the consent agenda?
Motion.
Second.
Motion for the second.
For the consent?
To approve it, to approve it, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Hold, stand. Okay, next we have personnel, um appointments. Um take this away. Document.
Uh yes, we have a substitute bus driver, um substitute cleaner, um substitute service helper and substitute cleaner, so nice to know that we have some substitutes that we want, and uh um we have a co-advisor that was added to junior class. And we have a point four uh E and L opposition, we talked about last month, and as you know, we're going until next Tuesday, but we'll need to push it towards. Well, that's a. And we can straightforward, nothing to.
So so why are we calling everything a civil service position? Um letters? So are food? Subs and all of that are off of a civil service test?
They don't have a civil test, but they do have the applications, they're doing for the civil service and.
Cause that's a change, we didn't, all of these weren't civil service before, in in the documents that we're seeing.
Yeah, the old ones, we used to have those to be the ones that such products that had to go through a test.
Through a test, right, that's what.
Maybe she just didn't give you the appropriate information.
Or maybe, that's what was thrown to me from the board, it's like, wow, why are all of these all of a sudden?
Yeah, no, that's. Yeah, I think you were looking at two levels, like, one a test, one this is civil service requirement. Right, or or um um application is the word for civil service, yeah, so there's two levels of civil service, is what you meant, so.
Okay, any other questions on these plans? Okay, um, you have motion to the third question?
Motion.
All in favor? Hold, stand, okay, hold on to reservations?
This is uh just the part-time food service helper, he's got a full-time job, so. Uh tough term in food service. Um let me go through the next one, or?
Also, let's um um. I have a motion to the third.
Motion.
All in favor? Thank you.
Uh long-term leave is um Catherine Studd, taking maternity leave, uh through the rest of the year, starting mid-February.
Do we have motion?
Motion.
All in favor?
I did, we posted the position, wondering if you before the holiday break, you know, in January, I thought quite.
What what is she, is that enough, is it mostly half? Okay, and we have a change in coaching compensation, would you?
Yes, this is a situation where cheerleading has become a sport the last two years, um and the and the, it just brought to my attention in terms of the level of the pay. And it was four point five, which is under any modified level pay, so what we did is I asked the athletic director to talk to local schools in terms of um what level that um cheerleading pay was at, or the level of excitement was at, and for the most part, they were consistent with modified level to below modified level to a JV level, so made the recommendation to move it up uh to a modified level pay for the fall cheerleading.
Any questions?
Motion.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Hold, stand?
Stand.
Okay, I would entertain motion to recess into executive session to discuss publication of file, taking a person, and deliberations on any matter made confidential.
Motion.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.